Go ahead.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, September 21st Caucus of the Albany County Council prior to our main meeting. What I'll do is have JR, can you, can you call out who's on? Who's here and present?
Sure. From, from staff, myself, Michelle Andre, Danielle Gillespie, Brett Williams from Corporation Council. Of the common council members, we have Kelly Kimbrel, President Pro Tem, Alfredo Ballerin, Catherine Fahey, President Corey Ellis, Jenny Farrell, Jamel Robinson, Joe Iago, Joyce Love, Michael Bryan, Tom Howie, Derek Johnson, and then the mayor and David Gallin.
Okay. Thank you. And what we'll do is just quickly upfront, we'll, the mayor wanted to come and speak to us on regarding Arbor Hill and the, the events over the weekend that occurred there. So go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you so much, and I just wanted to be able to come and speak to everyone directly so that everybody could hear the same thing at the same time. We learned, I learned yesterday morning when I read the shift report that I received from the police department, that there had been a large event at Arbor Hill Park. In the police report, the crowd was estimated approximately 1,500 people, four buses, coach buses from various places and, and large groups of, you know, very large group of people, clearly an event that was not permitted under the governor's orders with respect to COVID-19 and precautions taken with COVID-19. We had learned that there was a plan to have a step show, talent show event at Arbor Hill Park on Thursday. We were, I was sent a flyer advertising and encouraging people to, to participate in the competition as well as to attend the event. I reached out to the Department of Health, the county Department of Health, to advise them of this event because it was our understanding, based on our interpretation of the, the governor's guidelines, that a step show dance competition fell within a category that's expressly prohibited, that dance groups and cheer squads are allowed to practice using the guidelines and the protocol set out in the guidelines, but the competitions were expressly prohibited. And at that time, I believe it was David had the conversation with the Department of Health, they offered to reach out directly to the organizers to explain to them that this event could not occur. The next thing that I heard about this was on Friday, and I was told that the Department of Health had had conversations with the two, two of the organizers and that they had agreed that they were going to cancel this event and that it would not occur. I was at Arbor Hill Park on Saturday at around one o'clock, actually, a number of you were there for the renaming of the Hank Wallace Way. And at that time, what I observed in the park was a dance team, they were not in uniform or, or in costume, they were spread out on the softball field and it looked like they were practicing. You know, there was no, there were no tents set up, there was just no indication that any sort of large event was going to occur. And I left that area at around two o'clock, and that was my observation. The police, when they learned that this event had been canceled, sent their details to other locations throughout the city. And it was only through a, you know, a happenstance that police were alerted to the fact that it seemed as though this, this dance show was actually going to happen. And a police officer was asked by someone that he knew to come and watch her, or that she knew, to come and watch her in this dance show. And so when that person arrived, they saw a very large scene and they contacted the, you know, the dispatch and more officers were dispatched to, to that location. It, it, you know, I have seen video of it, I've seen body cam footage from police officers that arrived as it was breaking up. You know, large groups of people waiting to get on buses, no masks, no social distancing. It was a very large event. So, you know, the, we made the decision yesterday to do what we've done when we've learned of these large events in the past, which is to alert people that they should get tested. The fact that this occurred on city property has also led us to conduct an investigation into how this occurred and to determine whether or not there are people that need to be held accountable under the guidelines that the governor has put out. So we're still in the process of conducting that investigation. Our priority is for people to get tested. There were a number of young people who participated in this competition. I've seen footage of the competition, there was no social distancing, no masks by the performers, and these are young people who are going to be going back into classrooms, presumably. Some of them look to be elementary school students going back into city classrooms over the next few weeks. So I did speak with the school superintendent to alert her to the situation. And again, we're, you know, our number one priority is, is health, obviously. I will be, I, I know that the county is considering setting up walk-up testing sites, and we have a call, a control room call scheduled for tomorrow where it's my understanding that that will be further discussed. So, you know, that's, that's where we are. I, I want to make it clear that it was made very, very clear to the organizers of this event that they could not hold this event for, for the reasons that I've stated. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Is that? Ms. Love, do you have a question?
No.
Kelly, I just have one question. I got here late. Maybe it was already answered, but who, who opened the building? Maybe I missed it.
It's not clear whether or not the building itself was open. There were individuals, Deki Lawson and, and Patrick Robin, Robinson worked for the city over the summer and had keys to the building. After their employment ended, the key, the, the locks to that building were changed. We have a number of questions. The lights were on, on the field and they should not have been on. We didn't authorize them being turned on. It's my understanding that they're set to a timer and that they were not scheduled to be on. So we're going to be, again, sending a letter to Mr. Lawson and Robinson to make it clear to them, you know, we're, we're fine with softball happening, for example, on that field softball is a permitted activity with the right precautions, but that does need to be scheduled through us. And it's our understanding that they're actually advertising a softball tournament for this coming weekend where they're charging $350 per team to play in a softball tournament in a public park. So we just have to walk through them, what the rules and regulations are with respect to reserving city property and with respect to charging people for the use of city property. So we, we have some conversations that need to occur and that will occur, obviously, before, before this weekend.
All right, thank you.
I also want to be clear because I, I have heard that there have been questions comparing this event to the census events that happened over the weekend. The census events that happened over the weekend were permitted. They were on a large public street on Central Avenue. So we can't control people going to and from the businesses on Central Avenue, but the, the census event itself were tables that were probably 20 feet apart. I attended that event and we kept count of who was there and took down, you know, obviously it was a census event, so they were taking down names and, and home addresses of the individuals that were participating in that event. So when we have done events like Play Streets, there's one point of entrance and exit, we take down the names and contact information for anybody attending those events. So if there is a case that is reported, we are able to, to help the county with contact tracing. It's the same protocol that we have in place for our swimming pools over the summer, for the golf course. So, you know, there are ways of doing events where, you know, you're, you're outdoors and, you know, you're following protocols. The concerns with the event that happened at Arbor Hill Park is that there's no indication that any of that occurred, that anyone has a list of who participated, who attended. So contact tracing would be impossible.
So I'd like to state, it's my area that the, that this event took place in. Again, when I saw the flyer, I did reach out to Mr. Lawson, spoke to them. And as far as I knew, the, the event was, was canceled. Both Mr. Robinson and Mr. Lawson stated, you know, okay, the health department called them, they didn't want to get in trouble and they, they kind of separated themselves from, from this event. And, and subsequently, the, the next day, Mr. Lawson called me and said, you know, young ladies worked it out, I don't want to be a part of this. So, you know, it's on them, I, you know, I, I don't want to get arrested or in trouble, so I'm removing myself. And Mr. Robinson stated the same, that, that was their statements to me prior, prior to the event.
So Mr. Lawson was at the event, the police spoke with him, asked him what was going on. He said that this was an event that was happening, that was organized by him and by the, the Arbor Hill Sports Complex. When he was told that it needed to break up, he said that they still had it to, had to hand out the awards. And so the police asked him to expedite that award ceremony so that they could get people out of there. And so he, he was there, he did interact with police and he clear, I mean, from their perspective, he was very much involved because he was organizing and arranging the, the handing out of, of the awards. So, look, you know, at no point in time did anyone have permission to hold this event. And, you know, it was made very clear that this type of competition is, again, expressly prohibited. The rules, you know, we might not like the rules, but the rules around the types of events that can occur are all focused on preventing people from being in close proximity to one another for long periods of time. And by long periods of time, I mean in excess of one hour. So, you know, that, this, by definition, is, is the type of event that, that the guidelines that have been issued by the state are designed to prevent from occurring. But again, we, you know, this is just preliminary phases or preliminary stages of, of the investigation, but we, you know, when people don't come in for a permit, which, you know, I, I think it's common knowledge that you need to have a permit, certainly among individuals involved, that the, that the individuals know that there's a permit process. And part, part of the reason for that permit process is so that we can have these conversations around what's to be expected. For example, when we have farmers markets, we're not allowed to have music because you're not supposed to be encouraging people to stay. You're supposed to be encouraging people to come and then leave, or to be going from table to table to table and then exiting. So there are ways of, of organizing these events using the guidelines, but that's a conversation that has to happen during the permit process.
Okay, I believe Mr. Howie and Mr. Johnson have their hands up, I'm not sure the order. Mr. Howie?
Mayor, Mayor Sheen, thank you for coming. I really appreciate when you come and tell us what's going on directly. I just got one fast question, or, and I, maybe I missed it in the beginning, was there people from outside of Albany County at this event?
It is my understanding that four buses traveled here. I don't know where they traveled from. I was told that at least one of them came from New York City.
Thank you.
So my question is, has anyone talked to Deki Lawson or Patrick Robinson from your office?
I have not spoken with either of them today. We're conducting an investigation as we speak. So, you know, those conversations will come. I wanted to get the facts, so, you know, I, I had had a briefing late this afternoon once all that information was gathered.
Well, so someone talked to Deki or Mr. Robinson before you talked to us, right? That's a yes or no question.
I'm not sure I'm following you.
I mean, if, if Deki, you're, you coming to talk to us about an incident that Deki was at and Deki worked for Parks and Recreation, I think that that would be an easy phone call to talk to someone who was directly there because the numbers that we're hearing, 1,500, so how does an event take place that wasn't supposed to happen in Albany and it gets up to 1,500 people and no one was able to, you know, prevent that from happening? How does that, like, we know that it was going to happen and yet it still happened? I'm, I'm trying to understand, how does that happen?
Well, we were assured it was not going to happen. So as of Friday, both the county health department, and they've released a statement to this effect, both the county health department and the city of Albany were told that this event was not going to take place and that it had been canceled. So, and, and just to be clear, Mr. Lawson worked for the city for a period of time this summer running youth programming. He is not currently an employee of the city of Albany.
All right, and so when you were there at one o'clock and you saw a dance team over there dancing, that didn't say to you, maybe I should have someone look into it, like that?
Actually, no, I was actually really encouraged by what I saw. It looked like a dance practice, which is permitted. And it looked as though, you know, right, if we can't, if we can't have this big talent show, whatever event was supposed to go on, we're still going to use this park to engage our youth. As I said, they were in street, they were in their normal clothes, it was not, it was not set up as any, it would, I, I thought no more of seeing that practice than I would if I had saw, seen somebody doing skills and drills on the basketball court. It was that innocuous. It was one group with adult supervision, just wearing their normal clothes and using the park on a beautiful day. As I said, there were no tents set up, there was just, there was no indication at two o'clock anyway. Now, when I, yeah, no, at two o'clock, I'm trying to think of where I parked. But there was no indication that I saw of that park being utilized in any way other than how we would want to see it utilized. You know, I, I've, I, I live in the neighborhood, so I, I go by Arbor Hill Park on a pretty regular basis and, you know, there have been, you know, I've seen dance groups practice there before, I've seen people engaging with kids on the tennis courts, not playing tennis necessarily, but doing, you know, different activities. You know, it's, it, we have seen, and, and there was activities, obviously, that happened at that park that the city funded, all of, all to the positive.
Thank you so much.
You're muted, Kelly.
Okay, Ms. Love, Ms. Love, did you have your hand up? Okay, good. So with that, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to get into our agenda so we can move forward and start our, our meeting.
All right, great. We will, you know, we'll keep you informed and, you know, thank you for giving me some time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so for, for our agenda, let's go down, we have two public hearings, ordinance 96120 and resolution 728120 relating to the 76 project, that, that will be our public hearing. Next, to approval of minutes from previous meeting, I'll be offering the September 10th meeting minutes for approval. Next, to consideration of local laws, we'll have local law M of 2020. Mr. Conti's not here, so I'm going to ask that Ms. Fahey do the introduction. Okay, Ms. Fahey, for that?
Yes.
That, that'll be going to the planning committee. Okay. Next, on to consideration of ordinances, Mr. O'Brien's 209220, that will be a referral to planning. Okay, no hands. Next, again, another, Mr. Conti, Fahey, and Doshay, ordinance 219220. I'll ask that Mr. Doshay, will you do the intro on that? It's ordinance 219220. That'll be a referral to planning. If you hear me, Judy, just kind of wave your hand a little bit. Okay, all right, okay. All right. So that will, we'd be going to planning. Next, on to the active calendar issues, agenda item number eight and nine. Number eight by Ms. Frederick, that was worked through and will be considered, I'll be offering that for, for passage for number eight.
We have an issue with that, though.
Pending, pending the, the public hearing, excuse me. That's pending the outcome of the public hearing.
So my question is, I guess this is a question, Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I guess my question is for our council, since we have to do the resolution first, can we, after the public hearing, can we vote on a resolution?
Yes.
I, I don't.
You're correct. I'll, I'll pull item number 10 forward, it's, it's resolution 728120R by Ms. Frederick, that has to precede the ordinance 99. Okay, okay, Mr. President?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, yeah.
Yep, yep, you're, you're, you are correct. Mr. Doshay?
I think we have to make a motion to, during that process, I think we might have to make a motion to take it out of order on the agenda.
Yes, correct.
Ms. Doshay has her hand up, by the way.
Okay, and I'll make that motion to, to bring it forward. Mr. Doshay?
So at around five o'clock this afternoon, I noticed that there was an email from JR from about 3:38 saying that we should be, he hopes that we've been checking the OneDrive regularly because he's been changing and uploading documents. And then I was, and I was surprised that we're not being notified essentially that these documents are being, you know, amended when they're being amended. I, so I have, I have a little bit of a problem with, you know, A, understanding that, I, I don't know when we were notified that we're supposed to be checking the OneDrive, I guess, constantly for any documents that have been amended. I really think that we should be notified of any documents that have been amended when they are uploaded so that we know that they're ready for our review. Because we do get many versions, you know, and we don't know when something is in draft form and being reviewed by who or what. And so, there's, so there's about 15 documents in the OneDrive relating to this public hearing. Can we go over what's been changed in those documents? And I don't, you know, maybe.
Nothing has been changed, only thing that's been updated, it's been updated, everything that I've received, any amendments to resolutions or the ordinance, well, the ordinance has not been amended, that have been set on a separate one. I guess I misspoke when I put in the email, I was just saying, I hope you've been checking because everything that I have sent to the members, I've been putting in, in the OneDrive. So everything that I have sent to the members has been put into the OneDrive as well. But everything has been consolidated into the OneDrive.
Okay, so we, sometime, when did you send us the decision that I'm now seeing, that I, I, I didn't know that there was a decision related to the ordinance? And I had asked Ms. Frederick's last week in an email if anything was being done to put a justification in and how that was being handled, and I got no response to that. So I didn't know if that was being done or if something was pending or whatever. So I certainly didn't know that there was going to be something. So was this sent as an attachment to all the common council members before, like today? I mean, it hasn't even been sent today, but.
The draft decision? Are you referring to that one? That one has been in the OneDrive and I was waiting for commentary from the sponsor and from the chair of planning, received none, and it's still in draft form, it's still not in finalized form, and it has all the findings and it's mimics everything that is in the planning department, the planning boards. So I have not sent that out particularly to everybody, no.
So that is something that we're supposed to do when we are acting on an ordinance that is an amendment to a zoning map, no? I've been raising this for over a month now, I think.
It's been something that we have been, it's been something that we were trying to figure out, myself with Chairman Fahey, we've been trying to figure this out, we, this is the first time we've done it, and this is the first draft that we have, we have not been doing this in the past at all.
Well, JR, my understanding was if you did not receive any comments by Friday, then it would be finalized, correct?
Yeah, it would finalize it, and I guess I did not send it out on that time, it's been hectic, yep. I can resend it out, I mean, it has not changed from what I've been, what has been proposed.
But what has been proposed has never been provided to other common council members, correct?
No, not individually, no, it's been in the OneDrive.
Can someone clarify? I'm not sure what OneDrive is. Is that something for the city iPads that mine is not working? I'm just using my home email address?
Yeah, it's a shared drive where all of our documents are stored. It, it's easier to access from your iPad because then storage, storage isn't an issue, but it's.
We'll have to get back to IT because I had it fixed once and I just let it go for probably six months now, or since COVID.
You can use a link, Joe, I have, I, I don't use the iPad either, and I just started using it, so I can forward you the link that I have and you can see if it works.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Iago, Ms., Ms. Frederick?
Yeah, I just want to do a quick comment.
Yeah, I just want to do a quick comment. My understanding was I approved everything that was in my queue, just to clear that up. And then in terms of amendments, I didn't have anything, so I wasn't, I wasn't making any changes. I was just basically agreeing. And Ms. Doche, I'm sorry for not responding to your email. Clearly missed that once you mentioned it. Hello? Okay, does somebody say something?
No.
It is seven oh two, and you have attendees waiting that are either here to participate specifically for the public hearings or to give general comment. Would you like me to send them a message that is going to be a little bit longer? Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, please, please.
So I don't want to belabor this point. You know, I, I just think that we need to establish what the processes are so that people know when we're supposed to go into the OneDrive and actually review documents that are now ready for approval, or I prefer to have them sent as attachments. This particular document was new and could have been sent as an attachment to us. And, you know, I do have reservations, by the way, it's worded, but I think that this is ready to move forward, and I'll just be abstaining on this because I don't think that this meets the USDO requirements.
Judy, just to be clear, we are, as JR did mention, this process is newer to us. So we do have plans to sit down and iron things out as far as specifics as to who's responsible for what. A lot of work's been done to meet the USDO requirements, a tremendous amount of work. So I think, and it's, and it's been voted out of committee with a positive recommendation as well. I think it's, makes sense to move forward.
Well, like I say, I don't, I respectfully disagree that this provides the rationale for meeting the USDO standards as we're required to do per the USDO when we reach a decision. So like I say, I will be abstaining. I understand that people want to push this forward, and, you know, I do think that there should be more discussion about the process.
And there will be.
After a pass.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doche. So the sequence is we'll pull resolution seventy-eight, seventy-two eighty-one twenty forward. That's number ten on our agenda and take it out of order, after which we'll go back to ordinances under ordinances held, number eight. That's nine sixty-one twenty. That's number eight on our agenda. And it's the hearing also, so pending that outcome, we'll go to eight, offer that, and then number nine, Ms. Love's ordinance. Number nine on the agenda is ten sixty-one twenty. That's Ms. Love's, and I'll be offering that for... Michelle, I see your hand. Did I miss something?
So I'm just a little confused because usually when we have the public hearing, we just, aside from taking that one resolution out of order, so we're skipping the local laws and we're just going to do ordinances? Also, we're doing the ordinances also out of order? That's, I'm a little confused about that.
Which local laws are you referring to?
Well, you were just saying ordinance nine and then ordinance ten, right? That's also do, because you mentioned those.
They're just being introduced. They're just being introduced.
Yeah.
So after, and you're going to go to, after doing, I'm just a little confused as far as like what order you're using. So after the public hearing, you're going to do out of order for resolution seventy-two, right? Eighty-one twenty. Then there's public comment period and then local laws. So you're just going to keep the regular process?
Local laws, yep.
Okay, so, okay, I see. So my intention was to go through, offer the minutes, do the local law, then when I get, just before going into ordinances, do resolution seventy-two eighty-one.
Okay.
Twenty, and then follow it with that ordinance, nine sixty-one twenty. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then, then from there, we're going to... Right, we're doing the ordinances after local laws, and then we're going to the active calendar, the two, the two held items after.
Yeah, just the regular process. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Just the way you said it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So where was I? To number nine.
Ms. Love.
Ms. Love, that's ten, yeah, ten sixty-one twenty. With that, we'll be offering that after number eight. That'll take care of ordinances. All right. Then we will go on to resolutions. Mr. Hoey's resolution, recognizing Dr. Malatris, eighty-three ninety-two twenty. That'll be a pass. All members, co-sponsors? Yes? Yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we're all co-sponsors on that. Then follow that with Mr. Johnson's resolution eighty-four ninety-two twenty R for the recreational center, and that will be a pass. Do all members want to be co-sponsors or, I mean, I guess we just do our roll call and then we'll do it that way. But I, I personally will be. So that's that. Next, Mr. Johnson's also resolution eighty-five ninety-two twenty R, and that will be a pass. It's calling on clemency, call on the governor to review the clemency applications. Any questions, comments? You just throw your hand up. No? Okay, all right. We'll be moving forward with that and voting. Next, by Ms. Farrell, resolution eighty-six ninety-two twenty. That'll be going to finance and that'll be setting, actually, we had some, some changes made to it, so we're looking to, to pass that actually this evening.
I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any. This is something that really isn't discretionary. We're just certifying to the school board what we already did about adjusted local base proportions.
Questions? No, they'll be passed. Okay, next to Ms. Doche's MC. We gave seven ninety-one twenty R. Ms. Doche, you want to speak? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I mean...
Yeah, I, you know, we're, we've just seen the passing of a really historic figure, somebody who has been an advocate for equal justice for everyone, and a real trailblazer, pioneer, and I want to say the smallest giant I've ever known. And I just think that it's appropriate for us to recognize her contributions and honor her life and express our condolences.
Thank you, Ms. Doche. All members, co-sponsors? Yes, yes, thumbs up. Okay.
I don't know if I have eight-seven. I'm sorry to interrupt. Eighty-nine-one twenty R. The MC.
I'll forward it to you.
There was an email, yeah.
Thank you.
Right, just real quick, is the number correct? It's eighty-seven?
It is eighty-seven.
It's, I'm going to read, reformat it right now. It's eighty-seven dot nine-two dot twenty R. It's nine-two to denote that it's the second meeting of September.
What do I have? I thought I did that.
JR forwarded it.
I'm redoing. It says nine-one, so I'll put nine-two. So I'll reformat it right now.
Okay. Okay, so next, we're on to resolutions held, number nine on the agenda by Ms. Farrell in finances, sixty-eight seventy-two twenty R. That'll be offered for passage. Any questions, comments? Okay. There's some, resolution seventy-two, we will have taken out of order, so that goes. That's number ten. Number eleven is the Skyway Resolution. That'll, that's for finance and we'll be voting on that. Also, any questions or comments? I see a lot of blank stares out there, you know?
I just, I'll note, Kelly, on both of these resolutions, they came out of committee with positive recommendations.
Thank you for that. And then lastly, my resolution, adding Zach Garafalo as a member of the CPRB. That will be a pass. Okay, that's the last thing for the agenda. Mr. O'Brien, your hand. You're, you're muted, sir.
Okay, yeah, it has nothing to do with the agenda. It's the fact that Nigro is now, Somerset Associates is now suing the council, the city, and the planning board, and Marissa indicated that they're conflicted. So I guess there's going to be some discussion about private counsel to represent, well, three, I guess. I was wondering what's the plan for that? And what kind of a timeframe are we under to do that? And... So, can you hear me?
Yes. So Mr. Pichardo, Mr. Williams?
I don't, I, I would agree with Marissa that our office is probably conflicted out just by virtue of the, you know, the, the way the legislation was passed and, you know, the work our office did with the planning department. And since it is an Article seventy-eight, the statute of limitations on those is fairly short. Since we plan on declaring ourselves conflicted, I don't want to say too much or provide to the council, but I will note for the council's benefit that the statute of limitations on an Article seventy-eight proceeding is, is pretty quick.
Well, and we voted on that in May, and it's now September, and I know COVID gave them some extensions, but that petition is dated September seventeenth. So is it overdue? Has it gone beyond the statute of limitations? Obviously, if it did, that's the easiest way to dispose of it.
I will advise that maybe this is not the proper.
Oh, right, you're right.
I think, I, I just would advise this is not the proper form at this moment. I think I'll circle back with people individually on this one.
I agree with you.
Yes, I was, I suppose I was really raising the point that, you know, the council can possibly seek an extension or something in order to get more time. But yes, I would agree that this is not the proper form to get into the details on that matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So just swinging back to resolutions held, I've mentioned the number on the agenda, but I didn't read it out. We are also, we're offering resolution sixty-eight seventy-two twenty R. That's from finance for, for passage.
What, what resolution, where?
It's sixty-eight seventy-two twenty R. It's number nine on the agenda.
And the resolution's held?
Yes, yes. It's authorized in the treasurer's office to enter into the cooperative liquid assets security system.
That's the one Jenny's, right, Ms. Farrell?
Finance, yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's it. That's all I have.
And yours, okay. And do you want to, let's not forget on, on the public comment, the second public comment period after resolutions, we'll be reading any public comments that were submitted.
Right, right. And so the normal course is we, we go thirty minutes, then we extend for half an hour. So the first thirty-minute period, we're going to address folks in the room and allow them to speak until they're done, and then we'll swing back and read the, the public comments we received that need to be read in the second thirty-minute public comment period. Okay?
Kelly, I'm a little unclear. I thought Corey was talking about the public hearing.
Oh, no, public comment.
Public comment.
Yes.
So the public hearing, there's no limit on...
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
If that is all, we'd like to start Monday, September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty Albany Common Council meeting. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members could unmute themselves so that they could respond to their names. Anani.
Present.
Valerie.
Here.
Conti.
Here.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Here.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Fourteen members present and one absent.
Thank you, Madam Court. Now, we will, if you pull up our flag, so into our pledge allegiance, and at that time, we will have a moment of silence, but after the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we have, we, we will be heading into our public hearing. We have a public hearing on two issues. We have ordinance nine point six-one-two R, and that will be one public hearing, and then we have a public hearing on resolution seventy-two point eight-one-two R. And during the public hearing, you can, you can only talk about the resolution or ordinance that is stated. And unlike public comment, during public hearing period, common council members can ask the speaker, whoever speaks, the common council member can ask them questions about the subject matter that they're talking about. So that is the difference between public hearing and public comment, and there's no time limit. So with that being said, we're going to do the first public hearing, and it's going to be on ordinance nine point six-one-two-zero R. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President, an ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five of the code of the city of Albany, changing the zoning classifications and amending the zoning map accordingly.
Okay, and can the clerk call the first speaker?
The first speaker will be Joanne Morton, based on those that have signed up. And I'm going to quote her. Ms. Morton?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Morton, how are you doing? This is Common Council President Corriellas. You are now entered into our public hearing, and the public hearing is the ordinance nine point six-one-two R. You can have your comments. I don't know if you heard me earlier, but after your comments, if council members have any questions, they can ask you questions. This is... questions. This is different than a public comment where we can't ask questions, but of the speaker. So with that being said, Ms. Morton, go right ahead.
Okay, as you said, I'm Joanne Morton. I'm the president of South End Neighborhood Association, and I'm writing, or I'm calling to express our support for the development of the 76 Project and their application for the amendment to the zoning map. We feel that, you know, these changes are necessary for the redevelopment of these properties, and we support the project because it will, it's much needed in this South End community. I feel that, you know, the South End has been often overlooked or bypassed by private and public investments. So this is a definite plus for what is community. It's, you know, to us, it's not just another housing development, but, you know, what they have proposed will bring some amenities that are missing in our community and hopefully act as catalysts for other investments in the South End. And we're hoping that the Common Council will vote yes to support the South End development project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Any council members have any questions for Ms. Morton? Seeing no hands raised, thank you, thank you, Ms. Morton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Mr. President, the next speaker is Honorable Carol McLaughlin.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, County Legislature McLaughlin, how are you doing?
I'm doing fine. Thank you so much for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this project, a project that we've been hearing about for the last four years, a project that I, Project 76, which is about a block from my home. I am a almost 30-year resident of the South End, and I believe that this is a project whose time has come in this, the particular part of the South End. In my tenure as a council member and as council president, we had the opportunity to do multiple developments in the South End through the Albany Housing Authority. But this is one time where we have an opportunity with a private developer to come in and want to make an investment in the South End of Albany. I believe that when I walk around the city of Albany and I see other similar projects being, taking place like on Clinton Avenue where there are multiple units, not just the brownstones that we're used to seeing, but Lower Clinton Avenue, there's a multi-unit development that was came into being in the last year. And I believe that what that has done, just in terms of the streetscape on Clinton Avenue, can also happen on Second Avenue with this project. I believe that it will offer quality housing for mixed-income residents. I mean, from the plans that I've seen over the last four years, I told Mr. Jones that I could be one of his tenants, and because that's the quality that he wants to deliver to the South End. I understand the concerns that people have that made fabric of the where we can track current house, just and I believe for someone to come in, to be able to get investment, not only from the developer, but to be able to catch the interest of state agencies and other organizations and foundations that want to invest in the South End. That is, I mean, this is what we've been longing for for many years. I believe that once this is placed in the South End, it will spur, as Ms. Morton said, other development. Already, we're seeing people on Second Avenue investing in their properties all along the side streets. I had some work done on my house last spring, I mean, this spring. And I'm telling you, every other house now seems to be doing some work. And I believe that this is the same thing that's going to happen on Second Avenue once this project comes. So I'm looking forward to what Mr. Jones has, he has been receptive over the last three or four years. This has been in the making, and he has been receptive to concerns that have been raised by neighbors. And I'm glad to hear that. The environmental impact statement that people are calling for, just in the process of getting this project, that is going to take place. And I believe that people will be reassured that we're not going to overburden the public systems that will be used to ensure that people have quality of life in, not only in the 76 Project, but in our neighborhood. So I would urge your support of this project. The project has had the opportunity to receive grants thus far, and we don't want them to risk losing that funding, a million dollars funding that they've gotten from NYSERTA and other potential funding sources that are on the table without your approval, and things that have to be done in a timely manner. So I'm looking forward to any questions that you might have for the developer and any of his people, his staff, but also your support of this project is a support for the South End and a support for the city of Albany. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you, County Legislature McLaughlin. Really appreciate that. And no council members have any questions for you. So thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Next, we have Ariel Morton.
Hello?
Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Morton. This is Common Council President Cori Ellis. You are here to speak on ordinance 9.6120. Go right ahead.
Okay. Good evening, President Ellis and honorable members of the Common Council. As stated, my name is Ariel Morton, and this evening I'll be speaking to express my sincere support of the rezoning required for the 76 Development Project on Second Avenue. As a homeowner and fourth-generation South End resident, I've had the opportunity to witness countless transitions that my community has endured, both positive and negative. However, I won't use the minimal amount of time I've been allocated this evening to dwell on the past or current issues, but instead to shine light and stand in support of the plethora of possibilities the 76 will bring to my community. While others have overlooked the South End or deemed it as an area of blight, that developed, the developers of the 76 are cognizant of the potential my community possesses, and they want to provide ways to allow it to flourish and ultimately become self-sufficient. I'm confident that with the developers being South End natives, that this project will be prosperous as the developers are truly vested in my community and the success of this project. I deem the 76 as a restoration of hope for the South End community due to the promise of a well-deserved and much-needed luxury residence equipped with amenities and essential resources that our community should have direct access to, but unfortunately has lacked for numerous years. This sole project will grant us with direct access to groceries, health and wellness services, educational opportunities for our youth, and a wealth of other resources that we need and deserve. The 76 will be an asset to the South End due to the high level of jobs that is guaranteed to provide, which will in turn increase the revenue of our community. The 76 Development Project will exhibit that what South End residents have always known, that the South End is a viable community to reside in, work, invest, and develop, as opposed to one of blight. I am hopeful that this project will act as a catalyst for future development projects and resources being made available to my community that will help the South End reach its full potential. I humbly stand in support of this project and ask that you please approve the necessary zoning in order for the 76 to come to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. And I see no questions for you, Ms. Morton, so thank you for your comments this evening. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Mr. President, the next speaker is Jeffrey S. Baker. He's in the queue, and he also submitted written comment to the council earlier today, if I may allow him in.
If he wishes to speak, or does he wish to have his comments read?
I would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Baker. Mr. Baker, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And pardon me if I have this wrong, you're taking comments now on the ordinance, not on the seeker resolution, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So I will limit my comments to the ordinance itself. And I represent two landowners in the area of the rezoning, the Dunbrooks and Audrey Wedenbine. I have submitted various written comments on that. Many of them go to the seeker analysis that we'll address at the second hearing. But in terms of the rezoning itself, we are well aware of the many benefits that this project may afford and how the South End has been undeveloped and not, she received the same attention that it deserves. There's no question about that of the need for the services and the benefits there. The problem is, besides the fact that this project is grossly oversized for the neighborhood and where it is, and lacks the infrastructure going forward, the zoning tool you are using is an inadequate one to do what you want to do. If this is a good project that requires the necessary synergy of the various elements in there, you should be doing this through a planned unit development district. By doing it as rezoning this to mixed-use, commercial, campus-institutional, you, all of the representations that the developer has given to you on this has no effect on the rezoning. When this rezoning goes through, the developer can change the project. The planning board can change the project. And as, and as we're all well aware, and this is not meant in any way to denigrate this developer, developments go south. They lose their financing. They don't have sufficient financing. Changes in market conditions come into effect, and a project just is not completed, is not go through as a community thought it would when it was being presented. And then what will happen is you're left with the zoning for a commercial institutional use that is out of scale with that surrounding neighborhood. And who might come in in the future is somebody with a project for housing that is not affordable and does not represent the needs of the community and is not necessarily provide the services that it thinks you will have, because you will have changed the zoning for that area. So I'm imploring on you, if you are serious about doing this, and this is not a project given this magnitude that should just go through very quickly, it needs careful consideration to find out if it's real. I've gone through all the project materials that are on your OneDrive, and I've gone through the project materials that are on the Department of Planning's case management system. I'm not aware of anything in there that truly shows, A, what the plans even are. You do not even have a set of full development plans at a sketch plan stage to tell you what's going to be developed. They are not on your websites. You do not have sufficient information or any information that provides you general financial pro formas to show what the cost of construction is going to be, the sources of financing that's going to come in there, and how this could actually even happen. There's no timeframe for the two phases of development, not just for phase two, but how long will it take for phase one to develop? So you don't have those certainties that you need to go forward. So I would suggest, well, you do not have a PUD function element in the USDO, and I'm not sure why you don't, you should. You should take the time to create one and then approve a PUD for this once you go through the proper environmental review. At a bare minimum, if you're not going to do the PUD, you have the authority under the USDO to place conditionals and a durational time limit on the rezoning. So at the very minimum, you should put a condition on this rezoning that it must follow the elements that you're approving now in your seeker documents, and if it has not achieved approvals by a date certain and has shown the assurances that it can be built in a date certain, the zoning should revert to the zoning that exists now. So you are not leaving something there as is an inadvertent rezoning of a sort, of a portion of the South End that may be utilized for something different. Those are, those are my main points on this. I would like to address you on the seeker issues afterwards, and thank you for hearing my comments.
Any council members have any questions for Mr. Baker? Well, I do, Mr. O'Brien first. Go ahead, Mr. O'Brien. Mike, you have to unmute yourself, Mike. Mike, we can't hear you. You have to unmute yourself.
In your opinion, is there any relatively simple language that could be added to it tonight? Such that if, you know, such that it doesn't become a thing where the, where this developer collapses and somebody else comes in and builds something we didn't want? Anything, any relatively easy solution to that?
Brian, we were, we were advised by council that would, that would deem be illegal for us to do. We, as a council as a body, we can always rezone something back. We were advised by both corporate council and our council that that is not legal for us to do. Thank you.
Okay.
Because we do have the power, if any zoning in our, comes through us and we change it, if projects go south or it doesn't happen, this council has the body, has the ability to switch it back, so. By, by going through this similar process, but we was informed by council that that's not, we cannot do that.
And both of our
Anything for us, Mike?
No, that was my question.
All right, Mr. Onani.
Onani?
Onani, sorry.
Sorry. I just wanted, Mr. Jeff Baker, you know, thank you for your opinion. My question is more so, are you aware that the planning department suggested this location for the developers?
Yes, I am aware of that.
Okay, gotcha. And you said that you represent two clients that live close to the project? Have they reached out as relates to, you know, selling their property since they're in opposition to this project?
I think it's improper for me to get into any potential settlement discussions, but I will say there are discussions going on. There has not been any resolution.
Thank you.
So I'm glad Mr. Onani asked that question, because that's going to be my next question. You coming in front of this body, if your count, if your clients are in discussions about potentially selling property, you don't think it's a biased remark for you to come in front of this council and make the statements you make? Could be biased based off of your, 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 your client's being in negotiations right now with the possible developer?
With all due respect, no. First of all, my comments are biased because I'm an advocate for my clients and their interest of it. If my clients are not offered sufficient funds for them to have to be able to relocate and, and the compensation, what they do, they're going to have to be living with this project around them. There is no mandate, there is no mandate that this developer offers them a fair price for their property that they feel is worth for the bother. There's no eminent domain going on here. They're going to have to live with this project, and the Dunbrooks have been there for generations. And they have as, as right to concerns about what's going to happen for something that's literally going to be built around them. And that's what their view is. They're viewing it as a position that this is really not a good project for the area, and when we talk about the environmental, we'll get into significant more detail about it. But no, I don't see it's improper at all. We're trying to protect my clients' rights.
And I have one more question. So your clients do not feel an investment of this magnitude would enhance their property value around their homes? And enhance other property values around other people's homes? Are you saying your clients feel like that's, that won't happen? Because I'm trying to figure out the adverse effect on them. When I, you know, I was born and raised in that neighborhood, I grew up three blocks from where this was going to be, and I've seen that neighborhood go south, and there's no, no form of private investment coming in that neighborhood at all. So I'm just trying to figure out if a private developer like this does not come in this neighborhood and develop, how is your client's property going to be better off without a development like this?
President Ellis, what you're, you know, indulge me a little bit, we'll be talking, you're essentially talking about the impacts of the project, which is the second part of, you know, the public hearing on the other resolution, but I'll address it briefly. How will they be impacted by it? Because they're going to be in shadows most of the time from these buildings when they're looming over them, and they'll be in dark. How will they be impacted by sustaining months, if not How will they be impacted by sustaining months, if not years, of pile driving while this is being constructed? With the changes in the traffic, with the destruction of the street trees that could be necessary to construct this project? Yes, there should be private development in the South End and to improve the area. There's no question about it, but by taking it in the manner that it's being done, you are committing to simply maximizing the size of the project that you could fit into this footprint. Instead of looking at alternatives, which would evaluate the financial viability of various types of projects that it could have a scale that is significantly less, that provides an important benefits to the community, but is not dwarf and stymie the community. It's not an either/or situation. And the way it's been presented is simply as an either/or presentation. And if we went through the proper review through an environmental impact statement, you would have all the information that you need to be able to make the ultimate decision. You may come out at the end of that and look at the alternatives of it and say, yeah, well, you know, this one was a pretty good project and we're going to go with as proposed for the 76. But you also may find it's important to look at it differently. And that was to go to, to contradict something that County Legislature McLaughlin said. This is not an EIS that is going to happen later, this is not an environmental review that's going to be happening later. You're doing the environmental review. The only environmental review for this project and the development of the 76 is being done by the Albany Common Council. And the planning board is not going to look at the same issues or have the same power and authority that you have to look at alternatives on this. And that's why we can't just simply kick it down the road and say, we can address this later, those legitimate issues, but we'll look at it later. No one will. You folks, by being the lead agency, and if you adopt the negative declaration, you are precluding ending all future environmental review by all other involved agencies for this project. That is a fact. And so, you know, I sympathize with you without wanting to have to go through all of that work. And it's a long and arduous process sometimes of doing it, but it is the necessary thing. You are taking, you are approving what I think is the largest, most densely dense project that had been approved in Albany for a very long time. So, sorry, that was a long answer to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker?
Mr. President, the next speakers are the Dunbrooks, Deborah and James Dunbrook. I do see them in the queue, but they did provide their written comment, so I allowed him the opportunity to maybe give comment, and if they choose not to, then I'll read it, okay?
Well, if they comment, then we don't need to read their public comment. If they choose to comment, if they don't, we will just, go ahead.
Are the Dunbrooks with us?
They left a comment that they would like their letters read.
Thank you.
So read their, as part of a public hearing, yes, please read them.
The first letter is from James Dunbrook, 86 Second Ave., which reads as follows. Tonight, we on Second Ave. find ourselves fighting to survive an unfair zoning process. The city of Albany has partnered with the developers of the proposed 76 project to enact a zoning change to build outside the character of this community. It is a project viewed in terms of expedience without proper oversight or review. This proposed project is nothing more than a glorified warehouse for the financially disadvantaged. The building's having only one way to view the outside world like a prison cell. There is no basic logic in the proposed project. This is an emotional decision by the city, and as a result, bad decisions are being made. The environmental impacts to this community that have been overlooked during this process are unacceptable, but are being completely overlooked by this governing body. What is the sense in having environmental laws when they are so easily overlooked? Albany has two standards, one for outsiders like the developers of the Kenwood Commons project and one for insiders with political connections to Albany's political body, like the developers of the 76. This is a development model based on past history, which will not succeed in the present-day climate of COVID and economic concerns. Albany is a small city, which will die trying to be something it is not. Albany is broken, and this proposed project will not save it. Thank you for your time. Deborah Dunbrook provides this comment. Over the past several months, we as homeowners have submitted numerous comments to both the planning board and the common council and submitted a petition from the neighborhood opposing the proposed zoning change and proposed development. But it feels that our comments and those of our neighbors have fallen on deaf ears of city-elected and appointed officials. Once more, we are submitting more comments in the hope that someone hears what we have been trying to say for more than two years now. That the proposed zoning change and proposed project are unsuitable for this community, will ruin the longstanding neighborhood, increase density and crime, eradicate the green spaces that makes this a special area, impact the quality of life for the residents of the neighborhood, and demolishes homes that are occupied and historically significant to the adjacent National Historic District and a ecclesiastical complex that has been nominated for the National Register of Historic Places. The proposed zoning changes will allow uses that never would have gone into this area previously. It eliminates all possibilities of one- and two-family housing, which is what most families are looking to live in. Multi-family housing, which will be the only housing allowable under the new zoning, is not appropriate for families who have different requirements of space. It is really only appropriate for single people, couples and seniors, and mostly supports a transient population. Apparently, the neighborhood is composed of many long-term homeowners and renters, which keeps it a safe and connected area. The size and dimension of this project is certainly not in character with this area that is located in a historically one- and two-family area. The impact of the proposed zoning and development will forever change this neighborhood for a very long time. No one will want to live in the shadow of these buildings, which will render backyards and houses without daylight for a large portion, if not the whole of the day. None of this was addressed in the seeker documents. The impacts of the construction of the proposed project will make daily life in the neighborhood unbearable. The noise and air quality and traffic will impact those with respiratory and cardiac diseases. Houses will shake and plaster crumble, no one will be able to use their backyards due to noise and dust. Nerves will be on edge with the constant construction over several years. The streets will be tied up with construction equipment, personnel parking, staging areas, and traffic will be tied up constantly. None of this was addressed in the seeker documents. Where is the financing for such a project coming from? Grants are becoming scarce and held up under current economic issues. Banks are curtailing loans due to the number of bankruptcies emerging. Millions of people are about to be evicted due to non-payment of rents and mortgages. And yet, this project continues to be seen as viable by the city of Albany. Is the city prepared to be left with a white elephant on its hand or non-payment of taxes like the Kenwood Commons? Or even worse, two blocks of bulldozed homes that were previously occupied? And that will be barren, will be a barren wasteland? The proposed zoning change and project will make the South End worse, not better, and all for someone else's vision. We ask the common council to not approve the proposed zoning change but request the South End Development be required to complete a full environmental impact statement that will properly address the impacts of the proposed zoning change in the 76 project on this community. Until that is done, the city cannot truly make an informed and educated decision on this matter. Thank you. And that concludes the comment from Deborah Dunbrook.
Any comments from council members, because they are listening, if you have any comments? If not, Madam Clerk, is there another?
Mr. President, I have Tom McFeeters who signed up, but I can't tell if he is in the queue, so if possible, if he's in the queue and could raise his hand.
McFeeters, if you're in the queue. He didn't raise his hand.
So we also have some other participants that are in the queue. If they could raise their hand, if it's their intent to provide comments, because they may not have signed up directly.
Okay, is there anybody in our queue that is going to be speaking on the ordinance about rezoning 76 Second Avenue? Can you please raise your hand?
We had a hand raised from Elijah Willingham.
Okay. Are they on? Elijah, Mr. Willingham? There he is.
Comment, I want to speak on public comment.
Okay, thank you, he wants to speak on public comment, thank you. We do have raised hand Stephanie Fardino, Ms. Fardino?
That, that's what raised.
I know how to work.
Can she get in, or, oh, here she is. Fardino, go right ahead.
Are you able to hear me?
Good evening, yes, we can hear you, Ms. Fardino.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm appearing on behalf of South End Development. We're before you tonight, as you know, on a zoning map amendment and a seeker resolution for property located in the South End. As you know, this is the first major private investment project in the South End in decades. It has the potential to bring about transformative change. Since 2018, this project has morphed based on community input, the 2007 Segway Plan, and discussions with city planners and electeds. The result is that your planning department recommended that we follow this process today for a zoning map amendment. Mr. Baker is correct that there are many different ways that we could have achieved this end, but this is the path that we were given by your planning department in close consultation with their attorneys and your department. PUD is a possibility, sunset provision is something that both things are not allowed in the city of Albany. But President Ellis has a wonderful point that you actually have the ability to go back and rezone this property if for some reason this project didn't happen. And in fact, you've undergoing a study currently on the South End, which might recommend a completely different type of zoning for the property than what exists today. So all of the power is within you, as you see what happens in the future, to take action to address this parcel if for some reason this project doesn't go through. This project has not gone through quickly. This project commenced in 2018. This particular project, this specific rendition of this, started with a pre-application which was held on February 12th of this year. The amendment was based on the thoughtful recommendation of your planning department. When we look at the analysis of the amendment on this site, we look at pretty significantly what is happening with the project proposal. The project proposal maximizes the build-out of this site. It hits the height recommendations, it hits the same density. Many of the other uses allowed in this zone are either not appropriate for this site or they do not reach, they cannot be supported by this site. However, the recommended uses that we are putting forth in this project are on the higher intensity of the uses allowed within this zone. So as you're analyzing our project, in essence, you're analyzing the maximum build-out under the amendment, whether it's our project or some other one. You've got the height, you've got the density, you've got the uses. Yes, we have been in discussion with the two neighbors who are represented tonight. We actually reached out to them probably four or five months ago. We've reached out numerous times, I sent a letter, I think, six weeks ago. And we finally got a call on Friday and we've started some discussions. We don't know where those discussions are going, but we're happy that they're both represented and engaged in the process with us. And we hope to report that we have positive discussions going forward. We haven't reached that point because we just started the discussions on Friday. I will reserve the rest of my comments for the portion pertaining to the seeker recommendation. And I have, I'm here with, also with the rest of the team. So to the extent you have questions, it may be appropriate to bring in the Chazen team to answer them.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Can we go to our next speaker?
Those are all the speakers that I have that signed up.
We have Patricia Gordon Matthews just raised her hand. Can we see if this is in reference to this public hearing? Matthews?
Mr. President, I just don't allow her to speak.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, are you, how are you doing, Ms. Matthews? Are you here to speak upon the rezoning?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, I'm a proud Albany native.
I hope it's my internet, can we, have we lost her? I can't hear.
I can't either. Her end, I think.
Yeah, hold on, Ms. Matthews, can you hear us? She's unmuted, so. Hold on, it says connecting to audio. Technology.
She dropped out.
She's back in.
Okay, we'll let her try one more time, and if she can't get in, if council members would give us the leeway, if she gets in later and we're in the other public hearing, if you wouldn't mind her speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Matthews, go right ahead.
I'm sorry about that. So, I'm a proud Albany native, I currently live in Arva Hill, not too far from the middle school that I attended. And what I will say about this proposed project by the 76 is I've sat in on a couple of their meetings and listening to the transparency of the team that's working on this project, the different modifications that they've made to their project after hearing concerns from the neighborhood. And I initially had reservations about the project, thinking about, you know, the environmental impacts. But listening to the transparency of the team and their willingness, you know, to work with the community members, I must say that my thoughts on a project did shift in support of this project. To the extent that my family and I are in the process of purchasing a home that's not very far from the construction site itself. So we're definitely putting, you know, our hearts, you know, our money, our hard work on the line. I work in the area of where this project will potentially be raised at the local charter school. I have students who live in the neighborhood and families who will be impacted by this project. My hope is that with the investment that comes in this, to this area, as well as the potential for job creation, that my families, you know, after eight years of teaching in this community and working in this community, I have family who lives in the South End currently. My hope is that this project will provide an opportunity for my scholars to see a development from someone who models, you know, their aspirations so that I can point out to my students, you know, look at this amazing development that has happened by a son of Albany who has a deep vested interest in our community. So I really believe that, given the potential for environmental impacts, that this group has really, you know, gone to very far lengths to accommodate, to modify in any way, shape or form, the potential impacts to the environment. So I hope that this- So I hope that this rezoning will be approved. And of course, hindsight is twenty-twenty, which is very strange to say, given that we're in twenty-twenty with everything that's going on. But I do hope that the merits, you know, of this project will eventually outweigh, you know, any risk that there are. I drive up Second Ave every day going to work. So I see, I see the blocks where there's obvious investment from homeowners. I also see the corners, you know, that have, you know, fallen into ruin. So I hope that this project, you know, will bring some light to this community, will bring some hope to this community. I love my city, so anything that happens in my city, you know, I try to pay very careful attention to it. I appreciate the time and appreciate you taking my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any questions for Ms. Matthews? Seeing none, thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, you said we have no other further people in the queue for this?
I don't see any other participants with their hands raised specific to nine sixty-one twenty.
Okay. That being said, public comment period on the ordinance nine one six one twenty R is closed. And now we'll be moving into public hearing around Resolution seventy-two eighty-one twenty R. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution of the Common Council issuing a negative declaration in accordance with Article Eight of the Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations regarding ordinance nine sixty-one twenty, in ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five of the Code of the City of Albany, changing the zoning classifications and amending the zoning map.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the first speaker?
Mr. President, if the participants could raise their hand, I know we had Mr. Baker who wanted to speak again regarding the ordinance, but I can't see if there's anyone else in the queue that would like to speak specifically.
We have Mr. Baker and Ms. Ferradino, so we'll have Mr. Baker go first. Mr. Baker? There he is. Go ahead, sir.
As I said before, you are... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
I got a strange notice on my computer. You have to look at the broader environmental impacts of this project and what's going to happen. And it's important that you have the information in front of you that allows you to meet your seeker obligations. The standard for your seeker review on a question of a determination of significance like this, if you were to issue a negative declaration, is have you identified the areas, the relevant areas of environmental concern? Have you taken a hard look at those areas of environmental concern? And have you issued a reasoned elaboration for the reasons for your finding of a negative declaration? Now, one of the points I've made in various comments to the committee on this is I did not see anywhere in the files of the city in the planning department or for the council any independent analysis of the representations made by the applicant's engineers from any city technical staff or hired consultant verifying the analysis and giving an independent opinion as to the representations that were made. It doesn't exist. No one has it. The only one who gave an analysis, and I'm not criticizing him, is J.R. But he's a lawyer's analysis and J.R. would also be one of the first to tell you he's not an expert on environmental law. So you haven't had those kind of a separate analysis. And I've identified various means by which that hasn't happened. One of the most significant ones is the shadow impacts. Is there was an insufficient cursory shadow study showing the impacts of this project? And even that study shows significant shadow impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods and some of the parklands if this project is developed. That's a significant impact on the South End community, changing the nature of how people live. Another striking thing, and this came up today, and it really, it really, it really shocks me, to be honest, is I was preparing my comments on this. I was reviewing the city's files and found that, and on the website, the city's Department of Planning's case management file, is a two thousand eighteen geotechnical study prepared for this project. Except it wasn't prepared for this project. It was prepared for an earlier permutation of this project that only looked at the area along Second Avenue and only looked at it in the context of a three-story wood-framed multi-unit building. And on that one, it gave some, you know, cursory information about the soil conditions, but said it could be built. But that wasn't this project. And I highlighted that omission or essentially misstatement in my comment letter that I submitted at noon today. Well, lo and behold, and this goes to councilperson Deschett's comments earlier about, you know, when do we know information's going to be posted? At approximately three PM this afternoon, they were posted two new geotechnical studies that were prepared by Chazen and apparently submitted to the city in July of this year. Now, that study only looks at phase one. And from my review of the study, it looks like a perfectly competent study. But what's important about that study and is buried in there is, and I ask any of the people who've been out there and have talked to the the project developer, and I know the project developer, you know, has tried to be transparent and said, you know, how the project's going to be built. But the project developer also represented to any number of people that there would be little or no pile driving necessary to construct this project. That is untrue. The Chazen report says piles will be required, separated by approximately six feet, and they will be seventy-five-ton capacity piles. I don't know how many are going to have to be put in, but it will be hundreds, if not thousands, of them to support this project. And the impacts of that pile driving on the neighborhood is going to be horrendous. So to the woman who spoke before and she's looking to invest in the neighborhood because she sees that it's going to be on the upswing, is she going to be prepared and understand that she's going to have to live through months, if not years, of pile driving because we don't know the sequence of construction, of how this is going to be happen? What will be the impacts on the charter school from the pile driving going through? What will be impacts on surrounding structures and on the church? This is an important, critical area of potential environmental impact that was literally hidden. Those geotechnical reports were not submitted to you, were not submitted to the planning board. I don't know who had them or why it wasn't presented. But in the part two of the EAF that has been submitted, on the section where they talk about the potential impacts associated with construction, it's marked as no or small impact. And when you don't have any temporal information about how long and the nature of this pile driving, it is impossible to make that kind of a statement. It is that kind of issues of things that have been passed over and not fully developed that gives you the reason they say, I can't issue a negative declaration on this. We have clearly crossed the threshold for the potential for a significant adverse environmental impact. And I know Ms. Ferradino is going to tell you that she's, all the information that you would normally have in an EAS you already have now as part of your EAF. And again, that is simply not true. For the one thing, you don't have any information on the construction impacts and the pile driving. But more importantly, you don't have a document that's been put out for public comment, reviewed by the public and your technical staff. And the most important part of the environmental impact statement, what is considered the heart of seeker, is the alternatives analysis. And is a way of looking at what is the desire and the needs of this project applicant? And what does a community need? And are there other means of doing that that's simply with this manner that's been proposed? And/or are there other ways of mitigating the adverse impacts? This project should have had a more careful coordination with the planning staff, with other consultants hired by the city that should have been done. So you can protect this because, again, once you issue a negative declaration, those other impacts that I'm talking about in terms of shadows, construction-related impacts, traffic-related impacts, excuse me, the visual impacts, those are not going to be able to be subject to the planning board's review. They're not looking at those issues. That will have been limited by your seeker review. Do not make the desire to bring a project that seems to provide an important opportunity to an underserved community. And just because it is beneficial and laudable that is being presented by Black entrepreneurs who are from the community and are supposedly sensitive to you, to blind you from the need of also protecting the community, to make sure you're not getting something that is too good to be true. And what are you going to do when you have to come back and people say, I am losing my mind from this pile driving? It is impacting the church, the school, the health centers, and the people who are living around that. And those are the issues that you have to look at. And the other final part I want to make, and I appreciate the time you've given me on this. There is no analysis that they're doing this as a modular construction and bringing all the equipment in there, how they're going to get all of that equipment down there without removing the few shade trees that are there on the streets on the surrounding areas. When I walked the neighborhood the other day and I looked at that and I said, I don't understand how you get all this construction equipment in here without wiping out all of these trees and bring in these larger modular units. That's something you need to be cognizant of and say, all right, well, we're okay with that. But at least make it as a conscious decision of knowing what you're doing. And again, I urge you, as a matter of precedent, as a matter of protecting the communities, when you are faced with a major type-one action like this in this area, this is by definition requires an environmental impact statement. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any council members have any questions? Mr. Johnson, I don't know if maybe you're not talking okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
We have Mr. McFeeters who is in the queue before. Mr. McFeeters?
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for being so late and coming in in the middle of this discussion. I have been serving as the coordinator of a group called the South End Community Collaborative for now more than two years. One of the first things we did, and it had no relation to this project, was to develop a set of criteria for development we wanted to see in the South End. And included in that, a mixture of income levels, a mixture of services, environmental, environmentally friendly, to say the least. And other, other things that the neighborhood wants to see. We can't claim spokesmanship for everybody in the South End, but I have to tell you that this, this set of criteria, which we actually developed for the land bank, had a very high level of approval from both the people who attend that meeting and also the South End Neighborhood Association. So in looking at this project, which has gone through a number of local steps, to the extent that anybody can do it within the era that we're in, and a lot of outreach, there is very strong community support for this project because it does meet all of those objectives and criteria. And it's certainly not to say that everybody is in support of it. But it is, it is a pivotal project for this neighborhood if it goes forward. Much more so than what the land bank is proposing to do with vacant lots nearby. Because it really will, as I think I heard one speaker say, it will signal to people who are thinking about investing in that area that this is a good bet. Those of us who live in downtown neighborhoods and go back a ways remember betting on our neighborhoods twenty, thirty years ago, knowing that we would be underwater for a long time, but betting on the neighborhood. And that's what we're doing here. We're betting on a neighborhood. The last thing I want to say is, this is not a big project in the scale of the big projects that the city council has been approving over the last four or five years. These are not people with huge, deep pockets. These are people who are really trying to get something important done the best they can. They brought in great partners. But it's not a project that's going to survive a huge amount of additional waiting around, or I shouldn't say waiting around, but scrutiny that goes on. I mean, I'm sorry, but do we really need a shadow study? I'm not so sure about that. And do we lose some trees? We might lose some trees. Certainly, the pile driver thing is something that needs to be addressed. But I would just encourage this council to act as expeditiously as you possibly can on this project and make a decision, understanding how important this is to the neighborhood and how fragile a project like this is unless you've got really, really deep pockets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McFeeters. Any council members have any questions for Mr. McFeeters? Mr. McFeeters, I want to thank you for your comments, especially the comment about deep pockets. And I've heard, you know, the lawyer come and talk about these outside developers, and they're not outside developers. And I'm glad you brought that up. I'm glad you brought up a project like this with people who aren't these large developers with all this money. But for this council, when we look at this process, that's not our job. It's not a job to look at financing and things. Our job is to make sure that we do our legislative duty. So, but I see Mr. Johnson's hand up. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President.
From Mr. McFeeters.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the comment that Mr. McFeeters made in regards to the land bank, this project is already having a presence because we heard from the gentleman from the land bank, and he made several references to Project Seventy-Six. So it's already having a benefit on our neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that to the comment about the land bank and the future moves that they will, they will be making. I think it will be alongside what we're seeing right here. Because I said, as I said before, the chairman made mention to that. So I just wanted to point that out.
No further questions for Mr. McFeeters. Thank you, Mr. McFeeters. Appreciate your comments. Our next speaker, yes?
We have Edward Larkin.
Yep, I see him. Yep, Mr. Larkin.
Thank you, President Ellis. I'm here with Stephanie on behalf of South End Development. I did want to respond to a couple items because I know tonight is a night where this body plans to take action. So just for a moment, I'd like to address some of the, some of the comments made during previous speakers. This process, as was previously stated, started in February. We have made sixteen submissions over that period of time to the City of Albany, to all the technical departments and staff, to this body, to the planning department. We've been in front of you on eleven different formal meetings to discuss the project. You know, my one largest frustration with Mr. Baker is that he wasn't involved sooner. Mr. Baker has been involved, I believe, for three weeks now. And I know he's here raising what are, in his client's eyes, valid concerns. But this has been a long process, and there's been a lot of positive dialogue to speak to the foundation in the geotechnical report. That geotechnical report was as extensive as a report as you can do. We paid for additional testing, a shear wave velocity test, to ensure we knew exactly the principles of the soil so that we could safely protect adjacent properties. That was all done at the cost of the developer because he wanted to make sure this was done right. The reason we arrived at a pile foundation is because under the first iteration and working with your planning staff, it was determined that protection of adjacent properties was the most important, the most important goal. Yes, noise is an impact, but settlement and damage to structures is a much more significant long-term impact. The best way I can summarize this project is it's focused on long-term sustainability. By anchoring our foundation to the bedrock below the city, it will ensure that this building that's being designed to over a hundred-year lifespan will be here for a hundred years. And I don't want to get very technical with this body, but the soil conditions in Albany are a large overburden of very poor clays and then bedrock. When you drive steel piles through a very soft clay, it goes through extremely easily until it reaches the bedrock. And then those long, slender columns provide the stability for this building to last for a hundred years. So this is not a pile driving op- So this is not a pile driving operation that's going to run every day, like Mr. Baker has referenced, for long periods of time. And all of this is to support a steel frame building that is designed to last significantly longer than the previous iterations, which were wood frame construction. I know at a previous meeting, one of the, one of the members of this body expressed concerns about a project that doesn't last, you know, doesn't stand the test of time. That is not the 76. The 76 is a project, the vision of these two young gentlemen that grew up in this neighborhood to make a lasting impact. And again, I reiterate, I wish Mr. Baker had been involved sooner, had been involved in the entire process. So he could have asked the questions when we had time to sit down and answer them as opposed to at the last minute. So I apologize for getting on and trying to cover a couple of these items. But I do want to express that we have worked closely with your staff, we have worked closely with the city to look at the issues. And, and as you stated, every time you look at an impact, there's a counter impact as well. And we've arrived at the project we have now by going and looking at each of these impacts and making sure we take the one that's better for the long-term sustainability and quality of this project. And that's where we are now, and that's over a long extensive process. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have outside of that, but I did want to make those points, and I thank you.
Any council members have any questions for Mr. Larkin? Uh, Mr. Larkin, what is your job title on this project? I mean, when I ask?
Um, I'm a principal, principal with the Chasing Companies, and I'm the project manager for the Chasing Team on this project.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no questions for Mr. Larkin? Thank you.
I think Ms. Faradino had her hand up too.
Yes, Ms. Faradino.
Great. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Uh, I will try to be brief because Ed has been very eloquent in covering many of the points that I had anticipated covering. As you may know, the purpose of an environmental impact statement is twofold. First, to identify areas for potential impacts. That's something called scoping. And we did that with your planning department way back in February. And second purpose is to study those impacts, and we've done that. We provided you literally with hundreds of documents and studies related to both this project and the amendment. And we know that your planning staff has reviewed them because they've asked us to make significant modifications to them, which we've done. And that will warrant why we've had 16 formal submissions to, to your, um, city in various forms, either some to the common council and some to the planning board. Certainly, there's, there are ways that perhaps the City of Albany could do things better. And all of this information, if it were in one place, might have been easier for people to see, but it was in two places. And so the documents that JR moved into the OneDrive today were moved from the planning department's web, or web-based document profile over. So they have been available. We've had 19 meetings with city boards, the planning department, and the community. Your subcommittee met with us at five different occasions, including a site visit. One of our meetings was a dialogue for three full hours. We've had more, more than 10 hours of dis- committee. And at the end of it, they unanimously supported the resolution for, for the seeker vote. Mr. Baker is new to the game. We do wish that he had engaged with us earlier. Certainly, we were attempting to engage with his clients earlier. And he's right. All, all construction has impacts. Almost everything that you do outside has an impact on your neighbor. If I mow my lawn, I may be impacting my neighbor, but if I choose not to mow it, the problem's even worse. And we're saying here, yes, there are going to be some impacts, but we think it will be worth it for the community at large in the long term. When Mr. Baker says there's been no technical review of this, I would point you to the meeting that we had on September 3rd with your technical review committee. In that meeting, they reviewed the project. Planning was there, engineering was there. You had traffic, water, fire, general services, and Capitol Albany. The other issue that he raised was shadows on Crank Park. And if you look at the shadow study, you see that Crank Park is not within our shadow. It's south from our property and no shadow hits it. With your votes tonight, this is the first official step towards reali- realization of this ambitious project from two gentlemen who grew up in this neighborhood. We thank you for your consideration and all the time that you've spent on this ambitious project, and we ask for your support tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Faradino? All right, seeing none. Thank you. Madam Chief, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, sorry. Do we have any public comment written down for this? No? Okay.
I don't see any additional, uh, public comment.
Thank you so much. That being said, we will issue this public hearing closed at this time. And we will move into a regular scheduled meeting. Um, and that will start with our public comment period. During this public comment period, you have five minutes to speak upon any subject you like, but you will have five minutes to do so. And at four-minute mark, I will allow, I will let you know that you have one minute remaining. And so, and this time, different than public hearing, council members cannot ask you any questions. And please do not address council members with your response. Please address them to me as Mr. President or, or Chair of the council. But with that being said, and if council members choose to address your subject matter, they will do so at a later date, at a later time, excuse me, in the agenda. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first speaker?
Mr. President, we have a, uh, someone in the queue. They're from 518-424-9816, if I can allow them to speak.
Okay. Got to unmute. Ask them to mute. Can you unmute yourself, please? It's star here on your phone. Star nine.
I think it's star six if you're on your-
Six, thanks. The other way around, right? Yes, thank you, Mr. Ballard. And can you please state your name for the record and address? We can hear you. You're unmuted. 518- 424-9816? Are you there? Uh, we cannot hear you. I see you're trying to speak, but we cannot hear you. So, um, you might want to call in again, and we'll get you in. Because we're having tech, you're having some technical guilty on your end.
I can move-
Madam Speaker, can you go to the next speaker and we'll come back to them?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Fittiman, Barbara Fittiman is the next speaker.
There she is. Ms. Fittiman, go right ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, council members. My name is Barbara Fittiman. Um, I live on 350 Orange Street in the City of Albany in Ward 3. First of all, I just want to say good evening. I know it's a cold evening and it's new virtual stuff has got you all going. Um, I do once again want to come in the name of, of course, the Arby Hill Softball Field. Even though there are many other issues that I think about as well, that is dear and dear to my heart. Please excuse me for being hoarse because I was, I was the host of a lovely event over the weekend after a very long, prosperous, uh, summer event. And, um, full of programming, uh, health, safety. I do want to always let you know that there are always two hard workmen who work for free. Flay Dekky, um, Flay Robinson, and we have Dekky Lawson. And I just believe that the recent press out of the office after a beautiful, long, hard summer dealing with COVID, dealing with, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement, dealing with all the negativity going on, the killings, the shootings. You know, to have something on so successful and have such a disgusting narrative put on to cause mass hysteria. Why is that the narrative when it comes to the Arby Hill Park? We work hard. We volunteer all the time. And there is always very, very little support and threat tactics. I happen to know that there are council members who frequent, you know, the softball field area and are very much privileged to see so much positivity that's going on. But I'm pretty sure the only thing that you have heard is about this big illegal, and that's so not the truth. That is so not the truth. I'm an educator. I'm a lover of kids. I'm a lover of my community, recreation, and all of these things. And I'm very disheartened to know that what you heard about all the hard work that went in, about you not hearing about all of the volunteers that come there constantly when there is no funding from the city, about these men who put in their hard work from their heart and do a great phenomenal job, who sit there and let the community allow them to come in and try their best to make positive things happen. And that is the narrative that needs to be set. I've offered time and time again over the years, please come and just see. And now there's mass hysteria. I have never, in the history of COVID, which has been a short time, heard any type of public warning about going to get COVID tested when clearly there has not even been a COVID issue. If you knew that there was something wrong, why don't you stop it? And we're always in a position where it seems like we just can't work with the city. We always do. We always work with the city. We get skewed numbers and bad articles. So I'm, I'm very much disheartened that that's what you had to hear about all of this hard work that people consistently put in. And it's always a negative narrative. But I tell you what, we've been here years ago in 2016, and I'm telling you that park is still not done. We're still sitting on empty promises and lies. We work hard at it. What is it that you want done? You, you tell people to work hard, we do it. We buy our own brooms. We, I am one of the people who's a consistent advocate, and I go volunteer. I work hard. I do the same things that you do, maybe in some of the same places, maybe in different ones. And I just don't understand for the life of me over years why we literally cannot get the due support from the city. I, I'm just confused. No trash bags. I mean, there's been things even so far to sabotage, turn out the lights. We have to beg to have the park cleaned program. I mean, it's always like a control thing, a threat. I don't understand why we cannot get support, but there is always some type of threat tactic going on. Um, I believe that the lack of communication between those in the know and those who claim to be in the know or think they're in the know is an issue. For example, there was just recently a, um, honoring who happens to be my family, Hank Wallace. That is beautiful. There were very limited amount of people there who knew this man for over 50-plus years. Where's the reach out to all of those people to pay homage to him? When just the week before, the community gave him an entire weekend tournament in his name, two days. How didn't the city know about that? Where is the collaboration between community and those in a, in a position of quote unquote leadership?
One minute remaining, Ms. Fittiman.
So, you know, that's just an example, and it's almost a consistent slap in the face. But with all that programming, you will see still empty promises, still empty lies. And the first thing you, you know, it's like we're trying to have anarchy. We have beautiful programming, consistent program running for volunteers for years. And that's the narrative that you need to hear every single time. We're looking for support.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Have a good evening.
You too. Have a good evening. Uh, can a clerk call, please call the next speaker?
Had a Renee Maxim Walker signed up. Renee Maxim Walker is in the queue and could please raise your hand?
Ms. Walker, are you there?
We also have Bernie, Bernie Burns with us.
There he goes. Mr. Burns, are you there? You have to unmute yourself. Mr. Burns? You have to unmute yourself. We cannot hear you, sir. We can't unmute individuals?
No, I asked for permission to unmute Mr. Burns and-
Yes, I just called for the order of shrimp fried rice.
Would you like me to move on to the next speaker?
Yes, please. We'll try to get back to him later.
I see Cory-
Order something for me too.
I see Cory Jones.
Who do we have? Cory Jones? Mr. Jones, are you there, sir? Is there something going on? No one can unmute themselves?
I can move on to the next speaker, Mr. President.
Hold on, let's see. Mr. Jones, can you unmute yourself, please? Wow, okay. We'll have to come back. We'll try those two. Who was the next speaker, madam?
Um, I have Ronnie Mentor.
Okay. Mr. Mentor?
Am I muted?
Uh, yes, you are. Can you please state your name and address for the record? And then you have five minutes to speak upon any subject you'd like to speak upon.
My name is Ronnie Mentor, and I resided nine Harriet Mize Muse in Albany. And, um, I'm calling to speak as a representative for a new coalition that we recently formulated called Freedom Unshackled. And we are addressing issues within the criminal justice system. One of our issues that we're tackling, which is a resolution that we hope can get passed through the, uh, common council, um, is a clemency issue, clemency four times a year. Through this, through this initiative, we are asking Governor Cuomo to grant time computations because he does a lot of pardons, but he doesn't do a lot of time computations four times a year instead of the period between Christmas and New Year's that is common for governors to do. Normally, governors will give executive clemencies through Christmas and New Year's. One day, there, and sometimes he gives a lot of pardons, and those are people, just so to backdrop, those are people who are already released. We're talking about time computations which would allow a person to go before the parole board to present themselves after meeting the criteria that's already in place for executive clemency. So what we're not doing is, we're not asking for anything of the executive clemency process to be changed. That application process, the criteria, we're not asking for any of that to be changed. Governor Cuomo currently has 1,800 applications on his desk. He vowed during one of his campaign promises to strengthen and move with applications for clemency. We have disproportionate people of color who aren't being granted clemency. We have white men and women who are, who have less time in than a lot of black men and women, where the applications came in after theirs and they are being seen. So we are actually saying, Governor Cuomo, please do the, um, clemencies four times a year. Just for a little back history, Governor Carri gave 155 time computations. Mario Cuomo gave 37. Pataki gave 32. And as of two, end of 2019, Governor Cuomo only gave 11. Currently, he's allowing people to be released early under the COVID, um, restructuring of criminal justice. But these are people who have already 90 days to their release date. So they're already getting ready to get out. This isn't it. And they're mixing apples and oranges. People thinking this is part of executive clemency. This absolutely is not. This is Governor Cuomo shortening his sentences of people who already have short time to come home. So what we're asking for the council to support our effort and asking the governor to release individuals four times a year with the minimum of three men, three women. And that is our ask, um, from the council. And we're Freedom Unshackled Coalition. We have a website, Freedom Unshackled- We have a website, freedomunshackled.org. Um, anyone can, I believe, some people have my information. If you want to ask further questions, you can just look them up as freedomunshackled.org. It's info at Freedom Unshackled, but that's just what we're asking from the um Albany City Common Council. I don't need five minutes, uh, Mr. President. You guys have been sitting here long enough. This is exhausting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mentor.
Yep.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
We have Joyce Williams with us, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, unmute yourself, there you go. Ms. Williams, can you just, for the record, your first and last name and your uh address? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joyce Williams. I live at ten Harriet Street. And um I just want to say thank you for allowing me to share and and to all the council members. I had just wanted to speak on um basically the softball field when um the mayor was speaking, and I just wanted to ask, what was the difference between um? Was it the issue that there was, you know, like no social distancing, no masks? Um, because I know that the gyms are opening and people are together and they're, and they're exercising and they're doing Zumba. So I had just wanted to ask some questions and I thought I would be able to ask questions at that time because I'm really kind of new to this process. So um because I am a big um born and raised in Arbor Hill, played softball over there like um for like fifteen years. And I guess I'm just like heartbroken because when I go over there, I just see how that field is now and today. And you know, there's no um, like a lot of community participation. So I just wanted to know like, you know, what needs to be done, what can be done? What do we need to be do, what do we need to be doing to get that kind of like back like it used to be? You know, people had a place to go, families had a place to go. I mean, we had teams, we had, you know, participation on both fields. You had a women's team, you had, you had women's team, you had men's team. So it was just real sad and to see how that just dropped off. And um the other thing I wanted to know and how to go about doing is like um the basketball court. Like the basketball court is over there and I know some women and, you know, they would like to do some outside Zumba classes and how does that go about? Like you need a permit to do that? You know, like, I guess I just wanted to, you know, ask those questions. So, you know, I'm just heartbroken to see how that Arbor Hill softball field really is, you know, and how it was and what it is today is really heartbroken. So that's all I really wanted to say. I had a comment way back then.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
I see a Len.
And I'm pretty sure uh Councilmember Love will reach out to Ms. Williams about those questions, since that's your district. Thank you. Um.
I see a Len Morales that's in our um queue.
Ms. Morales, are you there? Ms. Morales, just unmute yourself.
Mr. President, if you'd like.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
I also see Marisha Alavatic, and I'm not sure if Marisha Alavatic is with the developer.
Well, it's public comment. If she liked to. Ms. Alavatic? Wow, we're really having, it's having issues, I'm muting tonight.
Mr. President, I also see a Patricia, Patricia Gordon Matthews. I don't know if um she's interested in speaking.
Well, Ms.
Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening.
Good evening. You have five minutes to speak upon any topic you wish to speak upon. At the four-minute mark, I will uh let you know that you have a minute left.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just two things I would like to, I'm not sure all of the?
Ms. Matthews, will you, can you just please, for your, for the record, your address again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at two ninety-five Northern Boulevard in Albany. Um, I just wanted to, again, I'm not sure which, all the stakeholders that are involved, but the recent um redevelopments of the park on Livingston Avenue near Lake, I just wanted to express my gratefulness for that. Um, I've seen just the children in that neighborhood, including my daughter, who's expressing her co-signing her appreciation. That park is now the envy of all the parks in the city of Albany. So I'm very grateful to see um the developments that have happened at that area. Um, I have personally been tempted to ride on the zip line, but I do not want to damage it for the other children. Um, I also wanted to give a huge shout out to the Lyricism One-on-One Program that operates in tandem with the Boys and Girls Club in Albany. I have seen firsthand um former students of mine just flourish through that program. And I just want to um herald that program um so that people in the city know about it. Um, again, Lyricism One-on-One in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club. There was a ribbon cutting last week, um and it was very um enlightening just to see, you know, another beacon of hope and light um happening in the city. I hope that some of the improvements, um as I heard, I haven't gotten all the information yet, so I'm gonna have to research it about a proposed community center. Um, a new one coming to this area, which is also very exciting. Um, I'm hoping that we'll see some more of those community development opportunities happen in the South End. Um, so feeling kind of, you know, bittersweet that we're moving out of Arbor Hill. But at the same time, you know, my heart is lightened to see um the development. Um, our children have really been um struggling through this pandemic with losing a lot of those social opportunities. So to see again some of that development and reinvestment in our community in those parks um is very heartening. I hope that our communities will continue to band together um to resist and um just continue the outcry against gun violence. Um, and I just hope and pray that all of our community leaders, um, you know, our churches will continue to come together and be the beacon of light that they already have been in our communities. And I just want to express my appreciation to all the public servants on this panel um who work tirelessly, you know, in the light and also behind the scenes to serve our community. Your labor is not in vain. I just wanted to encourage you um and thank you for this time of public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Madam Clerk, I know we had Elijah Willingham commented earlier that he wanted to speak on public comment. Mr. Willingham still there?
Yeah.
Hello.
There he is. How you doing, Mr. Willingham? Go right ahead.
Afternoon, President.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, Elijah J. Willingham, one twenty-one Van Nuys Boulevard, Albany, New York. Uh, good evening. Um, we had a very successful event Saturday for Hank Wallace unveiling street sign. Um, today, I'm, I'm asking the common council to look into, into both positive on um DeLuca, Amando and Anita DeLuca, Tellaramo, tailor shop and dry cleaners. Clinton Avenue, one eighty Clinton Avenue. I'm gonna read this news article that was done almost eight years ago. Fiftieth Valentine, a tailor made day. Wife-husband marks golden age of tailor island in Albany. The DeLucas was newly wed when they was opened up their tailor and dry cleaning shop, Tellaramo, on February fourteenth, nineteen sixty-four. Valentine's Day, Amando and Anita DeLuca will celebrate their fiftieth years in business. Partners that made and spend their days like doing clothes, cleaning, tailing together at their store on Clinton Avenue between Dove and Swan. Tellaramo anniversary date wasn't meant to be a symbol of DeLuca's love. In fact, both said they wasn't any particular reason why decision to open their store on Valentine's Day came about a century ago. I was crazy about him and he was crazy about me, plain and simple, crazy. Hey, it goes on to say, Amando taking measurements for customers. I just never thought about anything but him. They met in nineteen six, nineteen fifty-nine, Anita was fifteen. Her grandmother was from Italy, the old school, old country. And Anita refers to, it used to sit on Madison Avenue still. One day, her uncle friends brought by Amando and introduced them. He was twenty-four at the time. Amando was new to United States. Nineteen fifty-six, he boarded the SSS Ameri-Dorn and sailed to America, six days to come to America with his sister and his mother. Not long after, his uncle uh introduced Amando to Anita. Amando begun working at the tailor at C L Summers. He learned to uh do tailoring at the age of six. Matter, he, people, no matter how long he took down, by the age of ten, he did his first suit. As soon as Amando and Anita, they begun to go together, but became, was she was too young. Allowed to be by themselves, by themselves and wanted to talk, to go out. Amando would have to take along Anita's girlfriends, that's what else. That's how it was back then, Anita said. Amando was drafted into the army early as the relationship went on. The only time they had separated from them was when Amando was in army. He was stationed in New Jersey and also in Atlanta, Georgia. He found odd jobs, he came back because the position at C L Summers was taken.
You have one minute remaining, Mr. Willingham.
Okay, uh, to get to the bottom line of it, um, they have two children, Maria and Colano, um, DeLuca. And we, we are asking the common council to do a street sign for them on the corner of, from Clinton Avenue, um Swan to Dove, where that's, uh, where the cleaner shop is located. Many of us, as they, they have spoke, um, here, uh, the former Howard Nolan, uh, James Corn, uh, Assemblyman Richard Connors, all participated in at their store. Matter of fact, my mother and father bought the house, one fifty-eight Clinton Avenue, from the DeLucas. So I know them personally for many years, many years. And I just wish that the, the common council would do this positive thing. I, I believe that's in Joyce's love, the third ward district. And um they are great people. They have, they have been there when it was good and they, they still there now in their twilight years. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Willingham, very much.
God bless.
I used to use that cleaners when I lived in Timbuktu, so I know them very much.
You know them personally. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have time for two more speakers and we have two. In the queue, whose hands are raised, we have Patrick, we have from Patrick Robinson and then Mr. Jackine Hope. Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Robinson, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good afternoon, Common Council, my name is Patrick Robinson. I live at twenty-three Timbrook Street, Albany, New York, one two two ten. Um, good evening. Um, I wanted to get on this public um comment, um period. And I wanted to address, because I um heard the meeting earlier and I heard the mayor addressing some of the, um, the activity that took place on Saturday, this past Saturday, this past weekend at the Arbor Hill Sports Complex. First and foremost, I just think that it's downright disgraceful, distasteful and borderline criminal that the mayor would go to the media and say that it was fifteen hundred people over there, and that is so far from the truth. Um, I was um over there, over at the sports complex, and this is what um happened all in a nutshell. We had some young ladies who sponsored the event that came to us and told us that they wanted to do a, you know, like a talent show competition, something involving young kids. So that was fine. I received a, I received a call from the Health Department on Friday. The Health Department didn't inform me that, you know, that, you know, the event could not go on. And I asked um the woman that I spoke to from the Health Department, I don't understand why you are calling me because my name is not on any flyer and I don't understand how you got my number at all. Anyway, I told the lady that I would speak to the organizers and tell them that, that their event would, would be canceled. When I spoke with the, with the organizers of the event, they asked me what can, what should they do? I told them young ladies that you need to go down to City Hall and then you need to contact the Health Department. I come to find out, um, neither one happened or whatever. And I was under the assumption, you know, because the ladies did tell me that they did go down there. It's not my job or Debbie Lawson's job to follow up. If they said that they had permission, they had permission. Another thing that I um, that I wanted to address too, I heard the mayor say that she was over there at the time, right, a little before all the festivities started. Like, if you seen, there's a big difference between seeing somebody um in regular street clothes and dancing. And if you see about ten or eleven, twelve, thirteen little girls dressed and looking alike and they're over there practicing dancing and from my understanding, you know, there was vendors that was over there as well. You knew something was going on. My other issue is that, um, we mentioned about the police. Um, the police were, the police was present. And if my, my opposition is if the police was present and they knew that it wasn't a permit for this event, I don't understand why they just didn't shut it down or tell us to. Because like I said, we didn't know. And like I um talked to Kelly Turnbull yesterday, we were unaware that the girls didn't have a permit. Because we would have shut it down ourselves, I would have pulled the plug, not everything. We, we just didn't know. So, you know, slinging the um Arbor Hill Sports Complex through the mud after all, you know, all the kids that we service all throughout the summers and everything like that is just, i- i- is just a shame and it's very distasteful to cause all type of um mass hysteria in our neighborhood and stuff like that. With schools go, starting back today and stuff like that, you having parents in doubt whether they should send their kids back to school. It, it was, you know, it, it's not right. And just like I was listening to the Common Council, uh, Mr. Johnson say earlier, which is, which is true, why it wasn't a phone call, she could have called us. Or somebody from the city could have called us instead of us running to the media. So, um, another thing I'm struggling with, so Saturday.
One minute remaining, Mr. Robinson.
All right, thanks, Corey. So Saturday, somebody, um, Saturday, somebody, um, they're, they're saying somebody had COVID and then Sunday morning, they're finding right out, like they're finding right out Sunday morning when she releases a, a press release, i- it's just, it's ridiculous. But, but thank you for your time, Common Council, you know, um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Uh, Mr. Jackine Hope?
Good evening, President Ellis, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can. Just state your name and your address for the record. You have five minutes.
My name is Jackine Hope, seven Leonard Street, Albany, New York. Uh, and I, I just want to address the board and say, on behalf of myself and Corey Jones and the South End Development Team, thank you, everybody, for all of the hard work and time and commitment. Um, on top of all the meetings we've had, as alluded to by our council, uh, the countless hours that we spent, uh, not in just in front of the city, but also uh in, in terms of our team with daily. with daily meetings for the past, uh, year and a half. Uh, this is a big moment for us and it's a big moment for our community. Uh, we appreciate it. I also want to just give a little historical context. Uh, my family has been in this area, uh, as far dated back as slavery. And we've committed not just countless years of effort in, in the various wars, uh, but also in the abolition of freeing slaves, uh, that came through the North. Uh, Corey Jones's family abolitionists in New York City has also, uh, committed countless years of work, uh, and towards the military and serving our country. Um, and as well as his family that is from here, the Horn family, which is a large family, um, have made many contributions to the area. Uh, this opportunity for us, uh, relatively speaking, is an opportunity for us to build in our city before we do it anywhere else. Uh, Corey Jones has had the opportunity to work in construction and build over two-hundred-million-dollar projects for the past ten years. I've worked at various levels, be it KeyBank, GE Global Research, especially GE, where I worked on projects that were over a quarter of a billion dollars. We have the experience, we have the network, we have the relationships, we have the vision, and we can execute. We have a proven track record of commitment to this city, to this region. My commitment to the youth, Corey's work in construction, be it the VA Hospital, be it wherever he's worked throughout the area, uh, also across the country. I've traveled to Atlanta to go to school where I witnessed development and how it changes people's community. It changes their lives, it gives them opportunity. And it also drives hope for the people who are standing up, looking at the people who are building, especially the ones that look like them. This project is beyond transform, transformational, not just for the city, but for the people and the pending looming tax base that is dying and crumbling in this area. There are many investments that are happening outside of the city, but still within the region. The city of Albany has a real big opportunity to take advantage of the momentum of this region. I stood before you before in support of the Skyway project, which I still see and believe as an opportunity that will benefit not only the city but exclusively the South End. Because the South End is one of the golden treasures of the waterfront and especially with our new South End Connector, which will still be connected to the South End Development Project, the seventy-six. Everything that we are doing is pushing the momentum, not just of this neighborhood, not just this project, but of our city. We have millions of dollars in a deficit. We have pending looming deficits and our closure of the dump. Uh, my time on the IDA, I've witnessed investments being made on tertiary areas around our city, not in our inner city. And we also have a demand based upon our housing study that said the city of Albany is short thousands of units. While we have tens of thousands of people waiting for affordable housing in our city, on top of aging infrastructure, aging buildings, aging properties. We have properties that will no longer be affordable housing properties, which some will be demolished or scheduled to be demolished. And we are here making the commitment to our city and our people to make sure that this place is a city where people can thrive. And again, I appreciate the time and the opportunity and, uh, I thank you all for your commitment to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Now that ends our public comment period for this evening. Uh, we'll be moving on to, through the agenda. Mr. Kimbrough, approval of minutes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer the meeting minutes from our September tenth of twenty-twenty, uh, council meeting for approval.
Second.
Their second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes approved. Now we'll be moving on to, uh, local laws, introduction of local laws. Ms. Fahey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm introducing local law M of twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Can a clerk please read the local law?
Local law amending part four of Article twelve of chapter forty-two of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to appointments to the Historic Resources Commission in the jurisdiction of such body to review emergency actions within historic resources overlay districts and further providing for a report on emergency demolition and stabilization procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. That'll be referred to our Planning, Economic Development and Land Use Committee.
Thank you. Staying with you, Mr. Kimbrough?
What I missed?
Motion.
Oh, no, remaining, uh, local laws are held.
Yep. Also, would you like to do your motion now? To reorder the agenda? Uh, you're, you're muted, Mr. Kimbrough?
Okay, yeah, that, that wasn't, this wasn't the point.
Okay, you want to do it after standing committee reports?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Moving on to standing committee report. Ms. Uh, Fahey, I don't know, Ms. Farrell, go ahead, Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the planning committee met on September fourteenth and resolution, I'm sorry, uh, yes, Resolution seventy-two eighty-one twenty R regarding the state environmental quality review process for ordinance nine sixty-one twenty, which is commonly known as the seventy-six project. Um, it passed with a positive recommendation to the full council. We also met on September seventeenth, uh, to select Industrial Development Agency Board applicants. Are, we selected Lloyd Stewart for the current opening and Mr. Anthony Gaddy for a position that will be open on December thirty-first. I should point out, we had excellent, excellent candidates. Um, and it was a, a very difficult, uh, choice between such good candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, it's going to be a joint meeting of the General Services and Parks and Rec Committee a week from tonight, September twenty-eighth, to discuss potential, uh, future expansion of recreational uses for the golf courts and finances for the golf course. We, uh, will have in attendance Sergio Penuzzi, the Commissioner, Frank, the only Deputy Commissioner, Scott Gallup, uh, Golf Course Superintendent, and Jonathan Jones from the Red.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Uh, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. On September sixteenth, the Finance Committee met to discuss, um, Resolution seventy-seven ninety-one twenty R, um, pertaining to the Skyway. It passed through with a positive recommendation. Um, although it has, the two upcoming meetings on Wednesday and Thursday have been mentioned at a meeting. Just a reminder to members that we will be discussing. Um, we have a few ordinances, resolutions to discuss, um, that will hopefully be quick on uh, one night and then we'll be discussing kind of an overall budget climate. So we won't have details yet of the budget, but instead be talking about, um, some revenue projections and some other expected pieces that we'll be seeing to kind of prepare us for when we get those numbers. And then the other night, we're going to be discussing, um, the five-year capital plan. And then
Thank you.
There'll be a bunch more, but we'll get the, get to those after the budget's released.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Uh, I don't think there's any other committee, uh, outstanding committee comments at this time. All right, uh, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to take Resolution seventy-two eighty-one twenty R, uh, out of order.
Second.
Their second motion. Thank you, Mr. Howie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Um, Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed Resolution seventy-two eighty-one twenty R and ask for its passage as amended.
Thank you. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council issuing a negative declaration in accordance with Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law and it's implementing regulations regarding ordinance nine sixty-one twenty and ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five of the Code of the City of Albany, changing the zoning classifications and amending the zoning map.
Thank you. Discussion on the resolution, Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to give a sincere thank you to every council member here, um, that have particip- we've all participated through this process. Um, we've had over about ten meetings in the last few months, um, one of which included a site walkthrough. So I definitely reckon, recognize the time and the commitment that each of us have given, um, and the thoroughness that we have done in our reviews. So for this resolution, um, in terms of a negative declaration for Seeker, uh, I just want to say that this project is a needed, wanted, and a celebrated project for the South End and for Second Avenue. It is bringing forth so much, um, opportunity to the community that we have not seen in a long time. These apartments will be affordable. These apartments taking consideration for seniors. And this, this whole project brings in the concept of green technology, not only to the point where it satisfies the twenty-twenty plan, but it takes a step further to go to triple net zero, zero waste, zero water, zero energy. And there's also wealth of amenities that are being, that will be produced with this project, such as a grocery store, a STEM research center, bank, things that our community and the South End needs to see. So I think this process has been thoroughly reviewed. And we provided, our research council has provided sound reasonings for why we have a negative declaration for Seeker. And, um, I'm looking forward to our vote and hopefully you can all support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Need for the discussion on the resolution. Anybody else like to speak on the resolution? Let's see, uh, Ms. Dushay?
Thank you very much. Um, I will be, um, voting in support of this, uh, resolution. I think that we have thoroughly vetted the issues to the extent that we can vet them with regard to the zoning change. And I want to note that this is a vote on Seeker on the zoning change, not actually on the project. Uh, and while I understand that if, uh, this goes through, for the most part, there's no, um, further Seeker review at the planning board level, um, it is possible that, uh, if variances are required, um, that those would require some additional, uh, Seeker review, as I understanding, understand it depending upon the, um, whether the planning board and plan department decide that those are part, uh, type one or type two, um, uh, actions. Um, it is challenging to try and figure out what is the, uh, potential impact. Essentially, what Seeker is about, it's about us figuring out, um, trying to make the least impact, um, while balancing social and economic considerations with the environmental considerations. Uh, the, the most significant issue that I'm concerned about is, uh, the shadow studies. I do think that we have enough information that has been submitted, um, by the applicant, um, with regard to the potential, um, shadow impact of this project and also probably other projects. Uh, and especially with regard to homes across the, uh, the street uh, that, uh, will significantly have the light coming in their front windows, uh, impacted by this project for about half the year, you know, during the wintertime, when we already see a little bit too little light this far north. Um, but, um, but I think that we have looked at those issues and at the, uh, you know, potential, the need for some development, um, along Second Avenue. Um, you know, I've advocated, I've said essentially, you know, I really think that this is, uh, something where it's more appropriate to not only zone this, uh, part, these parcels, but also the parcels of the next block down, uh, as M U C I. And that would be a, a more consisting, uh, zoning, uh, scheme. Um, but, uh, you know, essentially, I have my concerns, um, about, uh, this particular project. Um, I note that, uh, during the hearing, we've only heard from two people who came forward. Um, I find it interesting that people signed a petition but didn't then, and own properties in the vicinity, but have not come forward and talked, um, uh, about in opposition, uh, to this, uh, particular, uh, project. Um, I understand that it engenders a lot of support. Um, having lived in, on Morton Avenue and Sheridan Hollow and seen some enthusiasm for other projects that, uh, didn't deliver everything that they promised. I am really hoping that the, uh, sponsor of this legislation, Mr. Ellis, who's been very supportive, Mr. Johnson, who's been very supportive of this, um, will make sure that whatever happens uh, with regard to, uh, this, uh, project, that it is something that we can all be proud of having, um, voted, uh, for it. Um, and, um, and, and I'm hopeful that this project will, uh, spur additional development um, in the South End and provide, um, very needed services, uh, to a little bit of a, of a food, uh, food, uh, desert, um, area and services, uh, desert, uh, in that area. Um, so I do think that we have done our due diligence in studying the issues to the extent that we can study them. Uh, and I don't think that an E I S, uh, process will, um, will change my mind with regard to whether the potential, uh, economic and social benefits from this outweigh the potential, um, environmental aspects. So that's why I will be voting in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Dushay. Any further comments? Seeing none, can a clerk call the roll?
Ball, members can unmute themselves so that they can respond to their names. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Dushet?
Yes.
Fahey?
Yes.
Arrow?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Bro?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Getting back to our regular agenda, consideration of ordinances, introduced, uh, Mr. O'Brien?
I notice, uh, ordinance number twenty ninety-two twenty for introduction.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five of the Code of the City of Albany, changing the zoning classification of ten fifty-seven Washington Avenue and ten sixty-one Washington Avenue from mixed-use neighborhood center to residential to family and amending the zoning map accordingly.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be going to Planning, Economic Development and Land Use Committee.
Thank you. Continue on, Ms. Dushay?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of, uh, council member Conti, I notice twenty-one point ninety-two point twenty for introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Dushay. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance amending Article ten and Article eleven A or part two of chapter one thirty-three of the Code of the City of Albany in relation in relation to emergency building action in historic districts.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Referal to Planning Economic Development and Land Use Committee.
Thank you so much. Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance nine sixty-one twenty and asks for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance amending chapter three seventy-five of the code of the city of Albany, changing the zoning classifications and amending the zoning map accordingly.
Thank you. The discussion on the ordinance. Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you. So as I noted in caucus, for about a month, I've been asking for, for us to do what is required of us in the USDA to set forth how this particular project measures up against the criteria for making a zoning map change. And I followed up last week with a sponsor, and I was surprised to find out after five o'clock today that indeed the, something had been done along those lines and was put in the OneDrive, but not shared directly with council members, and we weren't even advised that that was now available in the OneDrive, which I then had difficulty accessing until about the start of this meeting. So I had no opportunity to discuss my concerns about that I do not think that it meets the requirements of the USDA. And I don't want this to be a precedent for how we deal with other zoning map changes. When it comes to this Love's ordinance, I did put on the record exactly how that particular minor map change does measure up and the rationale for how it measures up on the record for all of the criteria that we are supposed to be looking at for zoning map changes. So I'm a little frustrated that we haven't really done that. We haven't had that discussion. And in addition, in the course of the hearing today, I learned that other documents were put into the zip drive that then appear as though we have considered them as part of our decision. And I don't think that that is appropriate to be adding additional documents when they were not discussed in committee or in caucus, as though that they are part of the basis for our decision. So for those reasons, I'm going to be abstaining. I would prefer for us to actually handle this appropriately and establish a particular precedent. I respect the fact that some people want to see this project move forward. And so, you know, at this time, but I will be abstaining because I'm concerned about the precedent that this sets.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the zoning put forth today, M U C I, was decided originally by our planning department as being the best fit for this project. And the developers at hand in the city of Albany worked closely together throughout this entire process to give needed documentation, run specific studies, and make sure that everything was answered, all questions were answered. I do want to give a special thank you to our research council representative, John Raphael. He has worked tirelessly with this project and has done everything and really been integral to this whole process. So a big thank you to J R. To address Councilmember Duchesne's specific comments there, I think we are all well aware that this is a unique time for all of us. And if a document was missed in an upload, it's just a reality of the situation that we're currently in. The documents were all there, all present, and our decision is in line with the planning board. So that being said, I'm also looking forward to this vote, and hopefully I have your support.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. Seeing any further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Duchet?
Abstain.
Fahy?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Glenn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Thirteen in the affirmative and one abstention.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. Continuing on to ordinance, Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I notice ordinance ten sixty-one twenty and declare it an listed action and issue a negative declaration as determined by the planning board under the state environmental law.
Madam, clerk, can you please read the ordinance?
Amending chapter three seventy-five of the code of the city of Albany, changing the zoning classification of one eighty Sheridan Avenue from townhouse to mixed-use community urban and amending the zoning map accordingly.
Is there a vote on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Duchet?
Yes, sorry.
Fahy?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
You're muted.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinances on the agenda are held.
Thank you. Consideration, now moving on to considerations of resolutions, Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this first day of fall, I notice resolution eighty-three dot ninety-two dot twenty and ask for its local vote.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council of the city of Albany congratulating Dr. Jim Malatris on becoming the fourteenth chancellor of the State University of New York system.
Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Howie?
Yeah, just real fast, more than ever, I realize, and I think we all realize, the value of education. The SUNY system is an excellent source of a college education from bachelor's degree all the way up to PhD. It's important that everybody has a right for an education, and that's the way we can advance in our society. So I think it's important that we recognize the leaders of our institutions and try to make sure they do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Mr. Igo? Did I see your hand up, Mr. Igo?
Well, just getting ready to vote.
Okay, Mr. Anani?
Yes, I also rise in support of this resolution. I actually know Dr. Malatris, wonderful gentleman, hard worker, committed to giving students opportunity. And you have seen the leadership that he has shown here in the capital region with SUNY. And we have faith in him. We have all the confidence. Some of the first action that he has done is actually donate twenty-five percent of his salary to E O P. And for those who are not familiar, it's Educational Opportunity Program that helps many countless students, you know, with expenses, help them with purchasing books, help them with counseling. So some of these small steps that he's taken, it gives me faith and confidence that he's going to be the right person for this position. And I'm glad that he was chosen as a chancellor. And I look forward to all the great things that he accomplished over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Mr. Valerie?
Brief and quick, he's taken over SUNY at a very difficult time where enrollment issues for many of our institutions, COVID, financial struggles. And I think we're lucky to have him. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Anani said, as an E O P alum and an E O P director, the fact that he made that commitment, that personal commitment right from the get-go, eased a lot of people's concerns about what was going to happen to some of our most vulnerable students who are trying to seek higher education, to seek advancement in our society. So I thank Tom Howie, Representative Howie, for putting this forward. And I think it's a good sign for us to be telling our SUNY leadership that we're, we're here, we're looking to work with you, and we hope that growth of SUNY is also the growth of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valerie. Seeing no further discussion, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Duchet?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Barrow?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Glenn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Oh, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, fourteen in the affirmative.
No problem. Resolution passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice eighty-four point ninety-two point twenty R, and I ask that it be intro and held, please.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution calling on the mayor of the city of Albany to look into constructing a city-owned community recreation center.
Thank you. Ms., Mr. Johnson again?
Thank you again, Mr. President. I notice eighty-five point ninety-two point twenty R, and I ask that it be read and voted on.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution calling on New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo to review the one thousand eight hundred applications for clemency currently on his desk.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
Yes. I would like to say something. As I stated before in caucus, you know, my brother was charged with, you know, he was charged with a crime that he didn't commit, and he ended up doing jail time and that, you know, I know everyone in our family, you know, would have loved for him to be considered for his situation. So we know, you know, just from a personal standpoint, you know, I know there's people that are in situations that are currently locked up. And we, we just think that it would be beneficial if consideration was truly given to three more people a year. I think that, I know a person that was pardoned by President Clinton, and she's currently in law school. And sometimes those opportunities prove out to be great stories in the end. So I think on behalf of many families that are waiting on words, it would be important right now for more consideration to be put in such a serious situations as we are discussing right now. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Fredericks, you have your hand up?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Duchet?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Barrow?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Glenn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ms. Barrow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution number eighty-six ninety-two twenty R and ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you so much. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council certifying to the Commissioner of the State Department of Taxation and Finance and to the Chief Fiscal Officer of the Albany City School District, the locally adjusted homestead and non-homestead base proportions for school tax year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one pursuant to New York State Real Property Tax Law, Article nineteen.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Anani?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Duchet?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution eighty-seven point ninety-two.
Excuse me. It has to be added by majority consent.
Oh, it's an M C D?
Yes.
Yeah.
I missed that one.
Yeah. So thank you, Mr. President. Motion to add resolution eighty-seven ninety-two, ninety-two twenty R by majority consent.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's no one opposed. So now, Ms. Duchesne, can you introduce?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution eighty-seven point ninety-two point twenty R for introduction and ask for its passage and roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council mourning the passing of United States Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg and honoring her for her life's work fighting for justice for all.
Discussion on the resolution. Ms. Duchesne?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With the passing of Justice Ginsburg, I, I I just felt as though it's appropriate for this body to recognize her life's work because of the impact it has had, not only on women, but all people, all people in the United States and many people around the world. She was an icon, a hero. People say a rock star, and I'm kind of in that category in my admiration of her. She went to law school under trying circumstances. She had already lost her mother at the age of 17. She went to law school, and she was helping her husband, who was very sick, and they had a young child, and she was doing triple duty at a point in time in which women generally did not go to law school. She was one of nine women at Harvard Law School in a class of over 500. And the dean had the audacity to ask her and the other women, why do they think that they were entitled to be in law school, taking up the place of a man? And that was in the 1960s. That was over 40 years after women got the right to vote. And it took us 60 years of women organizing and fighting prior to getting the vote. And what essentially, what if you know anything about women's rights, history, and the kinds of things that women talked about, laws that were designed to protect them from certain things that really were shackles and would not let them see their full potential. So Ruth Bader Ginsburg very cleverly fought for women's rights, really by fighting for everybody's rights and being free from stereotypical gender roles. So she helped men get Social Security that their wives, you know, from their deceased wives. And took other actions. She argued six cases before the Supreme Court and won five of them. She essentially wrought, made law by going to court, and a kind of law that is better than any law that would be passed by Congress because it was constitutional law. And we now recognize the rights of people to be free from bias based upon whatever sex that they were born. And at the same time, she was fighting for similar kinds of equality and using the 14th Amendment of the Constitution to argue for equality for all people. What she did was the kind of thing that Susan B. Anthony and Elizabeth Cady Stanton and Carrie Chapman Kat talked about over 100 years ago in terms of seeing women be free from this kind of discrimination. And she made it so that it's permanent because it's based upon our Constitution. And it would take a lot to undo that. So many women these days take for granted treatment for equality at the same time that we recognize we have only had four women total on the United States Supreme Court. We have yet to have a woman president. We have women in elected office are in the minority, and many other professions are in the minority and are still discriminated against. So in a sense, many people see that discrimination still going on. And I think that that is one of the reasons why she's a rock star because people realize that she was fighting to continue along the path while she served on the U.S. Supreme Court of helping eliminate so many of the biases and recognizing where we are as a society and where we want to be. And she defended everybody's right to love who they wanted to love. She defended a woman's constitutional right to have control over their bodies. She defended the right for health care for all in the Obamacare Act. And she made persuasive arguments. And she was successful in that, partially because she was so brilliant and so clever that she was well-respected by men on the United States Supreme Court before there was ever a woman on the United States Supreme Court. And then when she was on the Supreme Court, by being brilliant in her arguments to her colleagues and helping continue along the path of change. She has said, she had said that she will be interested to see how some of her pointed dissents, brilliantly written pointed dissents, may be used in the future to craft arguments to help further the cause even with a more conservative court. So we're all better off for having had her walk this planet with us and for her dedication and her brilliance to the cause and for the work that she accomplished while also being a loving wife and mother and human being. We're indebted to her, and she's a great role model for our kids. I do want to note that her first name was actually Joan, the name of my granddaughter. So I hope that she will be a role model for my granddaughter as well. So with that, I do ask that we pass this resolution honoring her and provide a copy of it to her family.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank you to Councilmember Dushay for such a full discussion of the reasons we're doing this resolution for our former Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. You know, she really is someone who stood for truth and justice for all of us, regardless of gender and sex and race. And, you know, she was someone who really stood for equality. But she really did speak to us women in particular because of, I think, the hurdles that she experienced throughout her life. This is somebody who was at the top of her class, and yet she wasn't able to get internships. She was someone who lost a job due to when she became pregnant, and the list goes on. And then I, all, what I can't help but think all the time, one of the reasons we're so fascinated with her is because, and I say we, I'm talking about women in particular, is because each one of us women have experienced types of discrimination, types of prejudice throughout our lives. You know, maybe not, some are much more subtle, maybe not as the ones that Ruth Bader Ginsburg experienced, but we all have experienced, you know, feeling unequal. And so each generation, we hope that our young women, and I like to think that that's happening, are, you know, feeling more equal than women in the past. And yet I know for a fact that many, many young women still experience certain amounts of discrimination. All you have to look at is compare the amount women get paid to the amount men get paid. You know, there are a lot of occupations women have that are paid much less than the common applications that men have. And, you know, those discussions go on, and we keep on fighting for equality. Now, I have to end by letting you know that during this council meeting tonight, I just became the grandmother of two beautiful baby girls. My daughter-in-law just had twin girls. So I'll end my discussion. And right now, they're called Baby A and Baby B. So we're waiting for the names. But my hope, of course, for them is that they live successful and fulfilled lives. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Any further discussion? Mr. Anani? Get unmuted yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution, and I want to thank Councilmember Judy Dushay for her time and effort in crafting this resolution. Ruth Bader Ginsburg was a titan for justice. Even before her appointment to the highest court of the land, her legal career was notable for her courtroom victories that made strides towards women equality. She was very outspoken, which is not really a surprise as, you know, like many true Brooklynites. She was tough, she was independent, and was reflected in her decisions before the Supreme Court. Justice Ginsburg dedicated her life to fighting for justice. She famously said, "Real change, enduring change happens one step at a time." And I think that in her memory, let's continue taking those steps on the path towards true justice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion? I would like all council members, if you would unmute yourself, since we are all co-sponsors of this, I'd like this vote to be a resounding. All those in favor of resolution?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Dushay.
Let's hear it for those new girls.
Yes.
Thank you so much for putting this together, Ms. Dushay.
Congratulations.
Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing on, oh, I put on my glasses, gangsta. Oh, okay, we're resolutions held now. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 687220R and ask for its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council authorizing the City Treasurer's Office to enter the City of Albany into the New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Securities.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes.
Baller?
Yes.
Dosette?
Hi, Judy.
I'm sorry, I thought I am unmuted. Yes.
Fahy?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Holey?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbra?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
14 in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on with resolutions held, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 779120R and ask for its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council authorizing the mayor to execute the Albany Skyway Agreement between the City and the New York State Department of Transportation for the Albany Skyway Project for the elevated ramp from Quay Street to Clinton Avenue and the last two spans of the southbound exit ramp of Interstate 787 over the Canadian Pacific Railroad and Water Street.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Love?
No disrespect, but was this by resolution?
It was a finance resolution, but...
I'm okay with it.
You're welcome to it, though.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
I think it was just put through as finance because it was a financial...
It's in finance.
I support it. I support it.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, can Mr. Anani? Mr. Anani, sorry?
No, no, you all said, "Thank you, Mr. President." You know, we've had this discussion as recent as Skyway Project for almost two years now. And, you know, in the beginning, when it was first introduced to the council, I had some reservations, particularly how much the City of Albany was supposed to put forward and how much the state was actually given to the City of Albany. And then a couple of months later, we received the $10 million that was dedicated towards this project. And right now, I believe that the Skyway Project represent a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-a-generation project here in the City of Albany. We're looking at a new incubator for tourism, a catalyst for private investment, and a new reason to say to folks in the suburbs or even downstate that Albany is the place to be. And I think that it's that type of project that we're going to be witnessing. The Skyway Project means that potentially no longer will people have to drive to Troy or Hudson or Saratoga to check out farmer's markets or pop-up retails. We could have that right here in our city on a Skyway. And we could be the hosts to some of these pop-up retails and also farmer's market. It also means that development of a new place where people can walk, they could ride their bikes while enjoying the beautiful view of downtown Albany and the Hudson River. Now, I know there are some people who have concerns about this cost, especially in the wake of financial strains our city is facing. But the state has committed $10 million for this project, leaving our city to pay a small remainder of the cost. You know, I've lived in Albany for several years, and I've spoken to people that lived in those communities. I don't remember the last time the state gave the City of Albany $10 million to go towards any type of project. And in these times that we in, to see the state continue to make this type of commitment is a step in the right direction. And I've said this before, you know, it's not very often that we get these type of investments right here, to create something that will pay off in the long terms. It's also going to help the business growth, tourism activity, both of which is key to expand Albany's tax base. And right now, we on the cusp of, you know, making, through the census, fingers crossed, we're able to get over 100,000 residents, which is going to put us in a different tax bracket. And this type of initiative and amenities that we are providing is going to make sure that we receive the tourism and also for new residents to move into our city. If the council votes down, our city's small match, which is being paid by bond requests, has very limited impact on our operation budget. Quite frankly, we're sending the wrong message, and we'll be jeopardizing future projects or future funding that could benefit all wards, even from the all the way to the 15th ward. I believe that this is a transformative project, and it would jeopardize future efforts towards a project this size. You know, and if we voted down, we might as well just give money to Buffalo, Syracuse, and Rochester, who are working day and night to make sure they receive these type of funding to revitalize their waterfront. Simply put, if we want to grow as a city, capture property tax dollars because people are investing in more property and attract new businesses to our downtown, we have to remain relevant. We have to recognize that this type of amenity is something that will result in additional opportunities, additional jobs, and additional economic interests. I for one would not stand in the way of progress and growth, and I urge my colleagues in joining me and supporting and ensuring this project has the funding that is needed to proceed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Dushay?
Thank you. Can you hear me? I'm unmuted, right? Okay.
Yes, we can.
So, you know, going back two years ago, you know, one of the questions I asked about this particular project is, what are going to be the ongoing costs? What is our share of the capital investment? And then what are the ongoing costs for the operations? And the answer to that question evaded us. And I found that very frustrating. Capital planning one-on-one, when you're doing a new capital project, you need to also take into consideration what is going to be the impact on your, um, on your regular budget. And I, um, am actually very pleased with the work that was done by the mayor's office and other people with regard to working out the agreement with the state so that our responsibilities have become clear. I am reasonably comfortable, uh, with the cost estimates. And one of the, one of the things that, one of the reasons of why I was concerned is because it was being equated to the high line, which they're spending like seven million dollars a year maintaining. Uh, and we don't have that kind of money, and this is not as big, but it's only, it, it still is one-third the size of that, so it could have been over a million dollars a year. Uh, we, it, we have been provided with clarification that the state is not actually putting in ten million dollars, it's putting in twelve point oh five million dollars on this, and that has actually reduced a portion of our share of what in the capital side that was anticipated, a hundred fifty, um, thousand dollars less than what we anticipated on the capital side. So I'm glad, uh, to see that. I frankly think that some of the work that we did with asking questions of the administration and making it clear that this couldn't be an excessive cost burden on the city, probably gave them a lot of ammunition with regard to negotiating a good agreement, uh, with the state. And, um, uh, and so I'm very, you know, I am pleased, uh, with, uh, the results, uh, on that. I have had reservations about this, partially because, uh, for the amount of money that, uh, the city is putting into this project, we spent about the equivalent amount of money renovating twelve city parks. And that includes Woodland Park, that you all know I have very significant concerns about how that has been handled. I'm very pleased to report that the city has been in there, uh, with trump grinders and other equipment to remove some of the hazards that I've been complaining about for the last, uh, three years. I'm optimistic that that particular project, once we get that work done, I will be able to be maintained in a safe and appropriate manner, without a lot of additional, um, expense. I am hopeful that what they are doing in my park will also be done in other parks throughout the city, because I know that my park, the only park I have in all of the ninth ward, is just a little postage stamp, uh, park, and is been, uh, and is like a, a number of other parks throughout the city that are in neighborhoods that have been poorly maintained, where vines and trash and weeds are growing all over the place. So, um, that, that is what I have struggled with, and now that I see some, the, the, I, I haven't gotten any guarantees, but, um, I have seen the, um, administration understand that our neighborhood parks are every bit as important as this particular, uh, project. So, believe it or not, guys, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Whoa, whoa.
Young gallery. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, when I think about this, um, project, I think, um, I connect it with a, a list of projects that are happening around said communities. You know, if, um, in, in, in the two years that we saw, um, um, some real changes as far as, um, projects in the inner city, maybe it will be, um, something to, uh, change my mind. I think that when you think about this bridge, uh, you know, I, I said this is going to be, today is going to be monumental, because this bridge is going to reflect a change in the, in, in, uh, look of, of, uh, communities on, on, uh, close to that bridge. I think this bridge is like a gift to, um, the condo, um, purchasers, uh, in that, um, close to that bridge. You know, um, uh, it looks pretty, but, you know, I don't see how a bridge is going to bring, um, the, uh, promises and the, is going to meet the projections that have been connected with this bridge. I hear, um, people are moving into our city, but at the same time, I keep on hearing, um, departments are down, and, and so are these people moving into our city with jobs? You know, um, I just, um, I want change, I want our city to look better. That's why I'm in support of, um, you know, projects, uh, like seventy-six. We need, we need new, um, fresh, uh, 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 fresh breath of air for our city. But it shouldn't, the fresh breath shouldn't just be for certain parts of our city or for future residents of our city. And, you know, when this, um, administration, uh, can show that on a, um, more consistent basis, you know, maybe we will, you, you know, I could support projects like this. But at this point, I, I won't be suppo- supporting this project, so, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Fahy?
Okay, um, yeah, when this was first proposed two, two years ago, it was very foreboding, uh, financially with all the stressors that it would put on us. But I really think it was the council's due diligence that we showed initially times voting down what was then, uh, I thought a bad financial deal for Albany and getting significant changes to it. And I believe as Councilwoman Dozier said, I think that our due diligence gave negotiating points to the city when they went back to the state to negotiate better terms for us. I still have a little bit of worries about the maintenance costs as they were stated to us, but the ca- uh, the initial capital costs, uh, I think are much better than when proposed. And hopefully, it will be a catalyst. Obviously, uh, it's going to serve a lot of visitors, but I think it'll also serve residents. So I'm going to vote for it, uh, with a few reservations. And I guess one of my hopes is maybe with this pedestrian bridge, uh, going so close to the, uh, huge concrete warehouse that has stood empty for thirty years, maybe that will be a catalyst to do something for that, too. Uh, I will vote for this, and I, I appreciate all the work that the council did and that the city administration did to take what I thought were initially challenging terms into much more doable for our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Fahy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I g- I agree with Judy and Mike, I, you, you know, people's skepticism and, and concerns about this project probably did help in the negotiating process. So congratulations on that. And, uh, as you know, I've supported this project all the way along. You can't turn down that kind of money, you just can't. And I, I, I do want to respond to, uh, people's concerns about the fact that this development is not happening in our neighborhoods, particularly our underserved neighborhoods. And, uh, you know, the simple truth is, it's not going to happen there, it just isn't. People don't want to invest unless they think it's going to be a good deal. And, uh, but, but the other truth is, you have something like what's going on down where the Skyway is, there's a lot of investment going on in some of the, uh, properties along Pearl Street there, you have capital rep, we've got, we're going to have a brand-new capital rep. I know Joyce, they've spoken to you about how it's going to impact your ward in a very positive way. And that kind of spin-off that you're going to see will bring more revenue into the city, and that money can be used for the things that we want in our neighborhoods, whether it's a community center or whether it's just, uh, repairs of our sidewalks or our fabulous parks, we, you know, that's money so well-spent. But I do believe this type of project will, uh, have that, that kind of spin-off effect. I mean, I want you all to think about what's going on this past year. I mean, the number of shootings we've had here in our city, I mean, that's a, a true deterrent for people wanting to be here. And we've got to find things to turn that around, to make people believe that this is a safe and exciting city and, uh, so that we can bring in those kind of funds to do the things that we need to do in our neighborhood. So I hope you'll all support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ballerin?
Aw, come on.
I'm sorry, I know, it's been a long night. I apologize. I do want to say one thing, um, I support this because I think funds are going to a neighborhood that deserves funding. A neighborhood that hasn't had support, hasn't had funding, or hasn't had a, a major project in it in a long time. So I do support this because of that. I, uh, I went through all the paperwork and, um, you know, I was happy to see presentation that showed the final numbers of what was, it was going to cost, uh, us to maintain. And yes, we have to be cautious that the ma- the maintenance cost is something we could afford. And the numbers are in a place where we can't afford to make this investment in a neighborhood that deserves this investment. In a neighborhood that has been hungry for some love and deserves to have this type of investment put in it. So I'm happy to see that we are doing that, and I also think we should be concerned with the fact that the fear that is out there, that this development is for those who would be coming in and not for those who live there now. And we should be pushing for more mixed income development so that it's something that everyone can enjoy and that all groups of all in- incomes levels can enjoy and not just a certain group. So I support this because it's going to be beneficial to a community that deserves it. And I also think we need to continue to fight mixed income projects so that everyone can enjoy these type of projects ten years down the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yes, um, I, I had reservations first when we voted on this a couple of years ago, because nobody really explained it to you the way it was explained to, to us by, um, um, who's finance, uh, who's chair of finance now. My thing is, and, and I talked to Councilman Robertson about this on several occasions, and I talk, talked to the mayor's office. This will create jobs opportunity for the third ward. Again, I know we still struggling with, uh, abandoned buildings, empty lots, but, uh, as, uh, Fahy said, that, uh, this will create some revenue where we trying to look to, uh, um, fix up, um, most of the third ward. So I support this resolution also.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy and Ms. Farrell?
It'll be very brief. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Love for all of her work on this and for, um, kind of guiding, digging in and doing a lot of work on it, and also staff, um, to get us where we are. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Dozier?
Yes.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes.
Igo?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Thirteen in the affirmative, one in.
Resolution passes. Continuing on, resolution's held. Mr. Kimbrough?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution eighty-two, ninety-one, twenty R and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please, excuse me, can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council, we appointing Zach Garofalo as a member of the Community Police Review Board.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Dozier?
I, she didn't unmute, but I believe she said yes and co-sponsor?
I'm sorry, guys. Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahy?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Lynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. And moving on to public comment, our second part of our public comment. Clerk, do we have any written public comments?
Uh, we do have a written public comment.
Okay.
Mr. President and members of the council, this comment comes from Alana Klein, twenty-nine Glenwood Street, Albany, New York. I hope you are all staying safe and healthy. As you may know, one of my recurring requests since I've started giving comments has been to change the official recognition of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. You cannot discover a place that are, that people already inhabit. Moreover, Columbus never set foot in what came to be known as the United States. On top of that, this crew decimated the population of the Taino people. While Columbus is, at least in part, credited with bringing spice trade to the new world, this expedition ushered in the slaughter of tens of millions of indigenous people. I am hoping that the council's gradual overall move towards social justice stances, like calling for police reform and renaming Livingston Park to Black Lives Matter Park, is an indication of more of a willingness to address this issue. While we cannot change the atrocities of the past, we must do whatever we can to have honest, open, and difficult conversations about history. Columbus Day is October twelfth. You have a meeting on the fifth. I hope to see a resolution on that, on the agenda regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day at the meeting. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. That being all, um, now we into miscellaneous period. Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to, uh, address the public comment by, uh, Ms. Patricia Gordon Matthews, who was a resident of the Fifth Ward Community and her, uh, strong support on what's going on at Black Lives Matter Park with the new installation of the, uh, equipment. I have literally seen this park come alive overnight. And, um, there are kids, um, constantly, and families constantly over there now, enjoying the new zip line, um, that's over there. And then also the new, um, jungle gym apparatus, which some of our staff on Friday, uh, climbed to the top, so, and I have yet to do that. But, um, it just goes to show, um, what small investments are considered small investments can do to boost the morale, um, of people, um, in our community, especially in challenged communities, uh, such as, uh, West Hill. And the best is yet to come, we're not finished. There are some other things that are very exciting things that are coming, uh, to Black Lives Matter Park as well. And I just also want to, uh, note the, uh, exciting, um, release of the RFP for a community center needs assessment and, uh, planning study for a location for a community center in the West Hill neighborhood. Uh, I want to thank Councilwoman Joyce Love for her advocacy and then all the council members and all community advocates, uh, for their, um, due diligence and making sure that West Hill, which is a severely underserved community, gets the attention that it deserves. And, um, you know, the sky is the limit, um, into what, uh, can happen, uh, with this new community center, uh, that's going to be invested in the West Hill community. that's going to be invested in the West Hill community.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you. I mistakenly forgot to co-sponsor 839220R for the senior chancellor. Can I please be added as a co-sponsor?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Love. Unmute yourself.
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say I truly have a great relationship with Councilman Robertson. We are truly partners in sharing what we do for the third and the fifth ward. We border with one another, so when we first got sworn in, we made a promise that we would work closely together and become a strong partnership. And that's what we have done. When I'm sharing a resolution or when Councilman Robertson is sharing a resolution, we go over it with one another. We truly, truly have a great partnership together. And I have to say, I couldn't have done this, a lot of this stuff that I'd done without him being by my side. And I want to thank him for that. And all the other council members that had input in some of the things that went on in the third ward, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's been a long night and those of you that know me know that I'm very, very protective of things. And, you know, this is year two that this mayor has come down to talk to us about Deki Lawson and Patrick Robertson. You know, two guys that I've watched for, you know, let's just say the last two summers, but many more, you know, give their time to that park Monday through Sunday, sometimes not getting paid. And, you know, to come down and have a conversation with us and to use their name and then not to give them a phone call, it just says something about, you know, our leadership and once again, how it's used against us. And, you know, those two guys take a lot of heat because of their relationship with her. And, you know, sometimes directly from me. So I know that firsthand. And they take all the hits, you know, they come back year after year to serve that community, to serve our city. And I just say, you know, it just leaves a sour taste in my mouth because it's just not right. It's not right, you know, when the CEO of the city feels strong enough about something to not even consider talking to the person involved. And so I just have to speak up on their behalf because I know it's a bunch of mothers that appreciate the time that they give the kids as well as I do appreciate them. And I wanted to go on record today and make sure that they know that their effort is not in vain. You know, I appreciate them and I know I speak for a number of people who appreciate them. And I think it's a shame that, you know, in September, you know, this is the type of thanks that they were given after all we had to deal with this summer. So, you know, if nobody else said thank you to Deki Lawson and Patrick Robertson, Councilman Johnson said thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. In light of, oh, Mr. Flynn.
Well, I just want to end our meeting on a moment of silence for the unexpected death of our former colleague, Gerard Campbell.
Okay. I think that's a good motion. I also would like that as we recognize, Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
As well as our ordered sister, our Supreme Court Justice, Anna Ginsburg, as well. We can, no, no, silent.
I'm sorry, could somebody, Jack, who died?
Is Gerald's father died? Gerald Campbell Sr. passed.
Oh, yeah.
Unexpectedly. So it was his dad. And so that was my, my comment was going to be, one, to adjourn in silence, but two, I've been having conversations with a few members and Danielle about trying to figure a way to support Gerald and his family in these next couple of weeks. And Danielle's going to be reaching out to him, figure some stuff out. So one of us will be reaching out to members to try to put something together to help support them in the coming days. Thanks.
Thank you.
On that note, we will adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
You don't need a motion, we've already made it.
Okay.
No problem.
All that stuff.